And we'll get underway. Steve will be hopping up there to the microphone to
Refuse.
Begin working on refuse fund.
Tab 14.
Tab 14. Steve, it's all yours.
Thank you. So I'm not, I'm gonna kinda hustle through the refuse because you guys have kinda beaten that one up. There's really nothing that's particularly different here from the direction that we landed on at the study session last month. Just a reminder, this is the list of services that we provide with the refuse collection program. It's staffed by a refuse supervisor and seven refuse collection personnel. In 2020, our main goals rely around the service transition that we've discussed at our previous council discussions to implement a modified pay-as-you-throw program with a curbside collection component. We want to transition from the current four-day collection cycle to a five-day collection cycle and transition commercial refuse collection to private haulers through hauler licensing. And then continue to partner with SWANQ for the variety of special refuse and recycling programs. A reminder that the refuse fund will be fully self-sustaining through fees and interest. The total budget is relatively flat. We talked in this slide, came from my presentation at the last meeting, with a range of fees for the various service levels, once a week with different size carts for curbside collection, once per week backdoor, twice per week backdoor. The changeover, we're targeting for July 1st to roll out the curbside program. And once the budget is adopted, we will start communicating with residents. The most complicated part of that communication is going to be identifying service preferences and container size preferences. So there will be a significant amount of two-way communication during the spring to identify that. And then we'll place the container order and get those delivered and roll out the changes on July 1st. Questions on the refuse fund?
You can't do twice a week, or if you're gonna do twice a week, you don't have to do that.
That would be staff's preference, yes.
And administrative costs of the different billing and stuff, is that part of the total budget? And where does that come into play?
That's part of the budget. It's not, it's not, we already contribute to, through our administrative services fee, and that's not anticipated to change. We would still do the billing. The billing system is set up and it's just increased data entry and management on our side, but we have somebody that's already doing the current refuse billing. We do all the commercial billing now, and so that would come off of that workload and be replaced with a little bit more work on the residential side, so it shouldn't wash.
There'll be a ramp up and then it'll...
This might be a Tim question, but on the refuse fund, so how do we reconcile if the sheet, if the fund balances, it shows 20, end of 2027, 79 versus what's in the book here for the refuse fund? Because there's a note, assets minus liabilities, but I'm not. So it shows on the book at the end of, there's a cash balance, there's total funds available in the 2020 of 832,000, but that's not what's in there.
We're starting what, Adrian, now?
So...
You're in the capital book?
Well, on this, but then I mean the...
Total funds available, okay. So this is cash, that's when we're resources, and the fund balances, current assets minus current liabilities.
So the...
So wouldn't necessarily equal unless the actual current assets and the current liability?
What other current assets are we...
That might be some of that accounts receivable. Yeah, it should be.
Okay. But this is one of the few funds that shows a deficiency to our policy? Do we have a concern about that at all, or not?
It's slight, and if you look at the cash balance, we show it ranking up. So until we know kind of what the full impacts of the change in the program and whatever, you know, the fees, we're not proposing any changes in the fees at this point in regards to the budget, as we get a better handle of the cost of these at that point, we could correct. But right now, the way it's currently has, you know, it looks, you know, the cash is not increasing, we should, okay. Does it make sense to address the slight fee increase to close that, I think it's $70,000 budget gap?
Yeah.
Yeah, I tell you, we don't even have a fee structure in place yet, so it's kinda hard to say.
I think by this time next year, we'll be looking at that again with a little more specificity, but getting through the transition, once we've settled in on the rates.
But is that a fund balance that, I mean, we kinda know what our capital is on that one, and we're not likely to have an unintended $400,000 cost in the refuse fund?
The only thing that's out there, and it's just noted as a liability, is we do have a closed landfill that we're forever responsible for maintaining. And so there's a possibility at some point, if environmental regulations change or something like that, that we may have some expenses with that. But there's nothing identified in the foreseeable future. But that's really kinda the only, I think, surprise there. The investment that we've made in our fleet this year and last year has put us in good stead for a five-to-10 year period. And it's a, there's not gonna be any significant changes to the operation. I mean, it's go to the house, pick up the refuse and dispose of it, so.
So the idea perhaps would be that the efficiency of the reason these fund balance policies would be ultimately made up through adjustments and resident costs?
And for the anticipated income, did you choose a percentage of each of the fees? Who selects what? What if everybody picks $20,000 a month? That could hurt us.
Well, that's what we talked about at the last study session, that it's a rate-setting exercise. That's why you have a range. We don't know exactly what the number's gonna be. One of the activities that we anticipate is a small sample survey, just to get a sense, hey, with this fee range, you know, maybe we go out to 200 or 300 customers or something and say, hey, with this fee range, what would you select? And then extrapolate that. So there's, the fee resolution that comes to you with the budget approval, because we're not gonna implement these changes until mid-year, will just be a continuation of the fees that are in place now. And then we'll bring a new fee resolution once we have a little better idea of what the exact rates. But I think, I'm confident that we can keep them within that set of ranges, because I ran a bunch of different scenarios. Unless everybody picks, you know, one particular rate, which I don't anticipate, I really, there's...
So you do something, though, to do the budget, starting July, right?
Right.
Is it just a mix of these?
It was. It was. So remember, we did a pretty comprehensive survey back in 2018 that asked a series of questions about what would your service preference be if we offered curbside versus backdoor, if it was sort of this rate range. And so we used that information to make some educated guesses on who would pick what out of that kind of fee range. And if you remember the numbers I presented in the study session, there was something like $100,000 a year difference. So it was, it was not catastrophic based on, I think, what would be reasonable expectations of what people are gonna choose.
Well, I don't wanna be lazy and use this as an excuse to rely on for every potential concern. But, I mean, our general fund has almost $12 million in excess funds right now. I mean, a hiccup of a couple hundred thousand bucks is easily rectified by a loan from the general fund over to the refuse fund. And, you know, I don't look at this as any sort of fatal flaw, only because we don't know yet. I mean, this is all the great unknown when it comes to garbage pickup. And until we do know, I think we just have to live with Steve's best guesses, which I think are probably better than most of ours.
And the containers, the 265,000, so the village, again, to understand the village is going to provide for free the containers to the residents?
Well, for free, except to the extent that that cost is built into the rate structure. But there's not a separate, I don't anticipate a separate billing item for the containers.
For certain sized container, you've got that all down?
Right. RFID chipped, even though we can't use that for direct billing at this time, we wanna have that option built in for when that technology becomes available with our financial system.
Just the, the change in commercial, is that known in the commercial district? That it's gonna be, we're gonna have to go around on the market, so?
It's been, it's been telegraphed. I think it was mentioned at the chamber meeting.
As well, in chamber comments. Is there a reaction?
I think we're gonna have to do more education on that Q1 of next year. It's, I mean, I think we want to make them aware that the policy discussion is going on, but until it's really real in terms of these are the prices, this is the process, I think that was the first inclination, was, is this gonna be significantly more costly for merchants or not? That was really the only significant question. But until it's real that they have to go do it, I think, I don't think we're gonna get very many questions.
Any other questions? We can say goodbye to garbage.
All right. Fleet Services. So this is, as I mentioned earlier, an internal service fund. That means that revenue is generated from internal customers. And that's, this is the fund that has all of the expenses for maintaining the motorized equipment owned by the village, including routine preventive maintenance and repairs, and some emergency repairs. In 2019, year-to-date, the Fleet Department, which is a supervisor and two mechanics, has completed 1,638 vehicle service tickets. That was through September, which contributes to reducing downtime and minimizing repairs. They also put together specifications for a number of pieces of village equipment. In 2020, we plan to continue providing that service, including preparing bidding specifications for replacing public works equipment and assisting other departments as needed for preparing their specifications, and to complete courses to achieve ASE certification and emergency vehicle training certification to improve our capabilities in-house. The budget for this fund is flat, with no anticipated increase. And you'll see in each of the operating departments, there's a line item that says vehicle maintenance. And that is the amount that's transferred from the operating departments into the Fleet Services Fund. Questions on that?
What's going on with the Unimog?
What's going on with the Unimog? It's still there.
Well, is it gonna be there for the 4th of July parade again?
It's a...
Instead of that lame truck we rode on this year?
That's a, that's a difficult piece of equipment in that environment, because of the size and the, it's not the smoothest transmission.
We're a hearty bunch, we can take it.
Not, I'm not worried, I'm not worried about, I'm not worried about, I'm not worried about you people in the back of the truck. I'm worried about the kids on the street in front of the truck.
If you would let us ride on the back of the fire truck instead of cramming us in the, we might, we might just disregard the public works department altogether.
Huh?
Yeah, up high.
Like perception will untie.
No, so you can dodge all the...
I think we need some kind of a hybrid vehicle.
Steve, it was lame this year. You weren't there to enjoy it, or not enjoy it, but nothing beats the umagog.
Yeah, we'll see, we'll see if we can do that. But it is, it is a safety concern that the operator had, that that's not an environment that they wanna be running that particular piece of equipment in.
Maybe it's operator error.
So there's this side-blank plowed tractor.
Yes.
$120,000.
Yes. It's a specialized piece of equipment, and that includes a number of attachments for that as well, multiple plows, sweeper, blower attachment. It's articulated tractor, that means bends in the middle for steering. It's got hydraulic takeoff that can power our smaller stormwater pumps. And it's, it's an expensive specialized piece of equipment.
You gonna sell the other one?
Trade-in, yeah.
Oh, you're gonna trade it in?
Yeah.
Actually, a question. In terms of, this is a little, in the past, that our vehicle, this piece of equipment is turned in and sold, where does the money, did you recover from that, or what?
Depends upon the fund, but go ahead.
Yeah, usually just miscellaneous revenue.
So if you...
Yeah, or sometimes it's traded in, just outright sold, it's, my, it's miscellaneous person, but, well, it's always that cost.
So it stays, it stays within the fund where the vehicle is registered. So if Brian auctions off one of his pieces of equipment, that goes back into the water, the electric fund. The other ones go to the general fund. If it's a trade-in, then it's just a deduct from the purchase price.
Is there a way, you know, can you go back with the trade-in and say, oh, we got this much, because you looked at this on the budget?
It's always broken out. And then we reserve the right to decide whether that's a reasonable amount for a trade-in or not. And that, that amount is broken out. When we come to you with a request to purchase a piece of equipment, to award a bid to do that, one of the particular line items is the trade-in amount. And we'll make a recommendation on whether to do that or not accept the trade-in and go to auction on it.
In either event, we can't buy any of the stuff, which kinda sucks.
You want the Unimog?
I want that tractor.
Right, Robbie, right.
I think it's just a cool piece of equipment.
Buy a third hand, maybe.
I don't know, it looks like it'd be a lot of fun.
All right, anything else on Fleet?
Stormwater sewer fund. Now the fund really begins. Can I have a tab number on this, please?
15.
Yeah, that should be a quick.
So the stormwater fund, this is, sorry?
Yes, the 15.
15, yeah, 15. The stormwater fund is, is an enterprise business fund, meaning that the revenues are kept within that fund to provide for operations and maintenance of the existing storm sewer system, capital expenditures for repairs and new storm sewers, and then also debt service on the two series of bonds that have been issued. The revenues for the fund come from the stormwater utility fee that's assessed to all real property in the village. And then future revenues are expected to come from those utility fees and potential other revenue sources, including possible bonds, proceeds from the general fund, grant funding, or other, other revenue options. In 2019, we've completed an intergovernmental agreement with Newtshire High School to allow construction of below-ground stormwater storage at Duke Child's Field, which begins implementation of the memorandum of understanding that we reached with Cook County Forest Preserve. Hopefully, by the end of the year, we will have in place intergovernmental agreements with the Park District and District 36 for stormwater storage at the Winnetka Golf Course, Little Duke Child's Field, and the Crow Island School property. We also completed several repairs to our storm sewer systems that we identified during video cleaning inspection, and completed construction of the erosion and control and storm sewer improvements in the Fisher Lane Ravine down by Sheridan Road. In 2020, we anticipate starting design engineering and permitting for the Cook County Forest Preserve project, design engineering for the storage projects at Duke Child's Field and the Skokie Playfield Golf Course, completing construction of the stormwater pumping improvements in the Bull Parkway neighborhood. Recall that we took bids on those over the summer, came back with unfavorable pricing. So we're just carrying that project over for bids early in the year when, when hopefully the pricing regime will be more favorable. I'd like to, assuming that we get these IGAs in place with, for the western stormwater improvements, I'd like to begin a stormwater evaluation for East Winnetka. That's an area that we've sort of been keeping on hold while we focus on getting the western Winnetka improvements kind of teed up and going. And then continued operation and maintenance of our storm sewer system. You can see financially, it's a relatively flat budget, although the one-line item in services and supplies, that's down 16%. That is almost entirely due to the fact that I don't have to carry a legal contingency, because we won the litigation that was floating around out there. So I was budgeting separate legal fees for Holland and Knight's work on that particular litigation, and that is, that's off the books now. Otherwise, everything is relatively flat. Capital, so the stormwater vision projects that Strand has identified, close to $60 million in cost over the next five years, include engineering and construction of the Phase 1 Cook County Storage Project, and the Phase 1 Duke Child's Field and Golf Course conveyance and storage. And then the Phase 2 storage, south of Willow Road and conveyance to get water through that system. The remainder of the conveyance improvement in Phases 3 and 4, and some distributed green infrastructure projects. That is more than we can fund with our current cash balance of about 16.1 million. That is sufficient to begin the stormwater vision project and do the engineering. But additional funding will be needed by 2021. So we propose completing engineering and engagement with the Army Corps and our fellow government agencies. And then to identify funding options, confirm the cost of the projects, and have a robust community discussion on funding in 2020. There's some other smaller capital projects, the Bull Parkway, some neighborhood-scale stormwater evaluations. From time to time, a neighborhood will say, we have a, we have a flooding problem that's not part of what's contemplated by the Strand Vision. So we have some budgetary capacity to respond to those. We've got a storm sewer on Orchard that needs to be relined. And then, as I mentioned, I'd like to start sort of a mini visioning process for the areas on the east side of Winnetka that experience flooding that we've sort of been holding off while we get the west side in order. Stormwater questions?
I got a few. Can I start, Bob?
Yeah, please.
Back up one slide, Steve.
That one?
I think, and I just confirmed this with Rob, you know, we all have to remember that this budget doesn't have anything to do with our levy at all, anyway. It's all self-sufficient and funded from within the fund itself. The only issues, obviously, are when we start exceeding what we have in the fund. So, so, I'm not saying that we don't need to be vigilant, but I, forgetting that point, when I was originally reviewing this, my questions might have been a little bit more pointed, but I figure I'd challenge you anyway, Steve, what the hell. How many homes are there that are gonna benefit on the Bull Parkway improvements?
Um, about, I forget the number off the top of my head. I wanna say it's 29.
Oh, is that many?
Yeah. Because it's, it's both sides of Bull Parkway, and then the homes in the subdivision to the west that sort of back up to that.
It's 30 grand apiece. It's funny how all these northwest improvements are huge on the per, per home benefit, huge. I mean, that other thing we did was, depending on how you counted, who got benefit, was 50 grand a house.
Lots of bigger.
I mean, there was the, there was the Kate Scrabble project. I mean, I understand there's an expectation by these people that we solve their problem. But, I mean, when we go into the stormwater discussions, we have to understand the sort of capital that we're contributing on a, on a per-property basis in other areas of town. It's a big number.
As opposed to like the Strand, where we're, that thing, what, 20?
Well, there's 900 and some homes totally. Call it 1,000 for easy math.
So divided by 69.
For benefit, right. Agreed. So, I mean, you know, these are interesting value discussions. I don't wanna shoot myself in the foot, but, I mean, it's something we have to be aware of, that we're talking about some really significant numbers to protect these properties. The point, I think, ultimately being, is that when we do modify our stormwater utility fees to reflect what the costs are, that people need to understand that there's huge benefits involved for relatively small amounts of money that they're paying each month. I mean, that...
I agree. I think that should be a problem.
And this is where the equity conversation is gonna come into play in a, in a very big way. But we're not there yet, but anyway. So that was one thing.
So you're not, you're not questioning the Bull Parkway project?
I don't like the price, and I, to me, it's a lot of freaking money for 20 or 30 homes. But, you know, the expectation has been created, the promises have been made, and we have to follow through on it. I mean, we, there's no way we can just pull it out and tell Mrs. Tierney she's not getting her stormwater.
And the other 20.
Right. But, I mean, but the vocal ones are the ones you tend to know, right?
But we will enhance home values.
We will. Oh, there's no doubt, I mean, but again, people just need to understand that there's some pretty big numbers here.
But of those 29 homes, how many homes provide the water to Gistos 29? It's a bigger area, right? Kinda like the tree streets.
Bull's kinda unique. Bull's weird, because it's between, you know, it's, you got the, you got the golf course on one side, and tower on the other.
It's the area of water that's the capturing.
It's relatively, actually relatively isolated near neighborhood.
Because then we look at the stormwater project, 900 homes, how many homes contribute to that 900?
Well, many, many more.
That's more like 20.
There's all those arguments. You're on the other side of the divide.
We don't contribute any water. We're just cash.
Bullshit. Yeah, that's because you guys are much smarter than us guys on the west side of town, right? Goddamn it, Bob. I've been hearing that for 10 years now.
We're gonna have to be careful on how we talk about this, so we don't create factions inside of our own small community.
That's correct.
People feeling antagonistic about the investment.
It's already there, though, Ann. That's the problem. It's already out there.
So we need to think about that. I mean, that's off the budget discussion, but we should probably have a discussion, you know, how do we make people understand the larger common good that we're working on?
Yeah, it's, it's a tough conversation, and it's already there.
And especially since the dollars are competitive with schools, and schools affect people on both sides of the...
But you know, Ann, that, that split has been there since 2011. It really has. Which brings up the next issue relative to, and Steve, I'm just gonna challenge you. I mean, I'm looking at this, and we got $280,000 in consultants' fees. Yeah, I know, it has nothing to do with the levy, and it has nothing to do with what we're taxing. But that's a lot of money for consulting fees. And I guess the question is, what would you imagine that we would get out of those sort of exercises?
For the 180?
Well, you got the neighborhood scale, and then you got the, the East Winnetka at a buck eighty.
Right. So the neighborhood-scale stormwater evaluations, I anticipate that's, that's both design engineering and construction. I mean, these are, these are small-scale type improvements, a small neighborhood, an intersection.
Like over on Birch over there?
Exactly. Exactly. The stormwater modeling and alternatives, that's essentially sort of a smaller scale to the visioning project that we did for the west side of town. It's not gonna be, I don't think... It's not going to be, I don't think, as intensive, frankly, because there's just a smaller range of potential solutions, and the area's a little smaller, but the same kind of no-stone-unturned evaluation for dealing with, there's, there's a number of, they don't squawk as much, but there's, there's a number of areas along Sheridan Road and west of Sheridan Road, Fuller Lane, that, that experience issues there, yeah. So, so that, that's what I envisioned for, for that improvement, and, and we've carried that in the budget for a couple of years, with the idea, we're not going to start that and sort of dilute the conversation until we have some certainty on what's happening on the west side, so I'm carrying it again on the assumption that we'll get some certainty when these IGAs close with our sister agencies.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Since we didn't do one Winnetka, have we budgeted things in all across, you know, your domain for handling them? And if we did, what happened to those funds? Did we see, was it the end of the year, or...
So, so the bulk of those funds are going to be in the next two presentations, so, so, I know Brian, Brian had, had budgeted some, some expenditures for potential utility improvements, and David had budgeted some expenditures for permitting and managing that project, so...
Well, obviously, this is the elephant in the room, I guess, or stormwater, I mean, clearly, and, and I just think there are a lot of ways on the transparency front that this sort of launches it, to me, it does. I mean, we've got numbers here, we're going to have real numbers, hopefully in the next six months or something along those lines, right, Chris?
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, maybe they'll be consistent, plus or minus, whatever, these numbers, but I think we have to look in this, at what we're talking about now, and you just sort of raised the issue of cost per home, ultimately, what's it going to cost per resident, and so on and so forth. We can start flushing that out a little bit, and we should commit to people, over the next six months, we'll be doing that. I look at the, again, Tim, I'm not sure on this fund policy, I mean, it almost doesn't matter, I understand that, but, you know, we're showing, you know, the minimum amount of four months of expenses of a million nine, and I don't, I don't know how you count expenses now, but I would count the expenses, you know, $7 million a year or something like that, right now, going forward. It seems like if you're going to do four months of policy, it's going to be plus debt service and repayment, you're probably going to have a policy of four or five million dollars.
That'd be for minimal fund balance, it's four months operating, plus one year's compensation.
Right, but...
That's the budget.
Turn your mic.
That's what, I mean, that's what the, the current policy is, as we develop the financing alternatives and how to pay for this thing, we might determine that a, a different fund balance policy makes sense.
And, and again, I'm not even sure how much difference it's going to make, I mean, in the scheme of this whole financing, but I just, I think as we start rolling this out, you know, we need to be talking real numbers here, maybe we change the fund policy to actually include capital, you know, four months of capital, or whatever it might be. Again, it's not going to matter because of rent finances, and I also think at some point, and it's not right now, but we probably do need to start having maybe CAD discussions with our public finance investment banker, but we should probably start getting our arms around that a little bit, just in a hypothetical, even, based on these numbers, and start sketching some things out, and, not to alarm people, but the numbers are here, I think we all want to do it, and now we've got to start thinking and getting real possible numbers out of what it's going to cost everyone hither and yon.
Right, and just to reinforce with everybody, and for the one person that might actually be watching this recording, is, the, the process is still the same, that, you know, once we have the IGAs solved, that will lead us to a, a real design, or at least something that we can get our arms around and quantify. Up until now, it's been with, with both the school district and the park district, you know, it's been moving back and forth depending on what we can negotiate favorably and what they want, and finding that middle ground, and once, once that becomes more clearly defined, then, you know, Steve, we can start talking about the whole getting it out into the public realm, or, you know, the private realm, the private marketplace, talking to construction managers, and getting, and getting some real-world pricing rather than engineer's estimates. And once we have those numbers pulled together based on what we know to be a real project, then we can talk about financing in a way that doesn't waste a lot of our times and, and thought process, because we'll at least have a really good expectation that the numbers we're talking about are the real numbers. The problem, obviously, with the last time around, and Andy, Andy, you were on the, the tail end of that, is the tunnel conversation started out at 38 million bucks, and I don't know where you guys ended up with it, but I think it was a lot...
My first goal was the shelling of word, I think we've gotten to, what, 80 or something?
Yeah. So, what I want to eliminate in this process is making sure we don't go, okay, we told everybody, what, 58 million, whatever it was, and that's the number that we've all been working on. Of course, you know, with, with, with increases due to CPI, but still, that's the baseline number, and then making sure we can reconcile back to that, and if we do have a budget, you know, budget blows, that we can identify it, and obviously, that's another conversation that potentially could involve equity allocation based on, on the overages. But at least it'll be a more intelligent, well-informed conversation, not just another engineer's estimate that came in twice what the last one was, so, we're trying to be really diligent about this, because by doing it this way, we're also keeping our consultants' fees to the bare minimums to get to the next stage, rather than designing the whole system, whole scale. We're just doing preliminary, preliminary, conceptuals, and then building from there, rather than just going full-speed ahead on, on full-blown design, so...
Well, that being the case, though, I agree with that, but that being the case, you put us roughly $7 million next year budgeted for this project. Of the 7 million, how much of that would occur before we get to shoveling the ground?
Go-no-go.
Go-no-go, engage the public finance guys, I mean, because, is it a million?
That, so that, that, that 7 million is engineering plus, recall, there's some pretty hefty upfront permit fees with the forest preserve for the, for the tree mitigation and the land use permit.
Yep.
So, so that 7 million, I don't anticipate actually having a shovel in the ground in 2020. So, roughly half of that is engineering, hard engineering, and roughly half of that is fees to the forest preserve and potentially for the US Army Corps permit.
And would we incur those fees before or after we did our analysis of...
It seems like we need a go-no-go.
Yeah, so the...
It would be before, it would be after that.
The, the, the engineering would be...
After our conversations. I'm not going to, I'm, I'm not going to stand behind paying all these fees and engineering services.
No.
If we can't confirm the, the, the numbers, number one, and that we can't agree on the financing mechanism, why would I waste the community's money?
So, the engineering is incremental?
Is what?
Incremental.
Okay, so how much of the seven would occur before we make that decision go?
Another half million bucks, maybe, Steve?
Tops, tops.
Okay, okay, because you're going to want to, once you get to that point, you're still going to want to have some of your financing concepts in place.
Oh, yeah, by that, we want to know, that's the know-it-all, no.
That's what I'm saying, it's not going to cost to get our public finance guy engaged in conversation, not, you know, between you or Denver or whoever, you know?
I agree.
It's time for an update to let him know where we are, but we had talked to him more substantively as we were framing up models for when we're ready to have the conversation. So, we can certainly let him know that things are progressing, but we don't want him to really put any pencil and paper till we know what we're penciling to.
Yeah, so, the, the first engineering expense is advancing our concept drawings to a sufficient level of detail to go out to the construction market to get confirmation on the project costs. And then, at that point, then, then that's when the real financing discussion takes place, and if there's some certainty that, yes, we're going to move forward, then we could authorize engineering sufficient to make permit applications to the Army Corps, but it's, it's a stepwise process where we're not loading everything in upfront and then winding up with a bunch of abandoned engineering potentially.
But do you see that first step happening like the second quarter of '20?
It all depends on the agreements.
Yeah, I mean, so, so that, the, the, when the, when the IGAs are complete, there's a box to go back and just check in with the forest preserve, say, does this, does this meet your intent, that, that this, this fits what you wanted in the, in the MOU, and then the next step is that preliminary engineering. So, depending on how fast the IGAs go, maybe we're, maybe we're having that contract here in January, February.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, but again, it's, you know, we're being really careful not to overspend on consultant and, and informational issues until we actually we have to. And, on a personal level, I'm trying to approach this as though it were a private project, and this were, were my capital, and being very stingy about making sure it goes out. If there's any comfort we can gain from what we've done so far, is that this is really a big earth-moving project for the most part, and the nice thing is, is those quantities are easily derived from what we've already done, and the market understands that a cubic, cubic yard of excavation, what the value of that is. So, this is really an easy analysis to do, for the most part. We don't have to get to fully refined, I mean, it's nice to know how much pipe, how much, how much backfill and all that stuff, but we can get really close pretty easily based on just the, the mass quantities that we already have, so, I don't see us spending a lot of money getting to the point where we can start to verify costs. Steve would probably like a little bit more detail, but I think we'll find that good tension between what he'd like and what I think is necessary, and we'll make it work.
I don't recall last year's capital budget, did we sketch the numbers out as far as we have this year?
So, yeah. Yeah.
Everything shifted one year to the right.
We were very optimistic last year that we'd be done by now. I thought we'd have a shovel in the ground.
No one may be watching this, Chris, with the numbers drawn in the public forum, and...
Year two.
So, so in a perfect world, according to this, you got a shovel in the ground in '21?
Yeah, I think so.
Maybe tw- maybe 20.
December 30th.
A year early, December 30th.
Maybe, maybe 20.
And what is the first fight, the county?
Yeah.
Or backwards?
Yeah.
Well, think...
And, and, and it's prob- it's probably, it, it, there's a possibility that some of that's a joint project, but until, until we have someplace to put any of the water, then we're really not accomplishing anything, so you got to start at the bottom and work your way up.
If there's any focus to this exercise that we want to end up with, it's a single shovel in the ground on the county property. It's staking that claim and planting that flag that this is now ours, and it doesn't go, it won't take a lot, but, you know, once we've actually laid hands on that property, we've ensured that at least this community has the ability to access that river at some point in the future if we decide not to. So, and that's a worthwhile investment in and of itself, even if it goes no further than that, so...
And I'm assuming the county's been kept up to date about it?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I met with Arnold Rand a couple of weeks ago. So, anything else, guys?
I, I was just going to say, you know, we have kept the taxing budget flat for years now, and the reason I thought it's extremely important to do that, even with all the other priorities we have, is because this is coming, and this is the elephant in the room, so, this is our biggest priority, it should be our biggest priority, it's affecting property values in the village, and the safety of the village, so, you know, once it's done and in hand, you know, you'd still take a conservative view, not much of, like, I, I think this is, we start and end with this issue.
Is there a way to track, just to make fun of our conversation on a regular basis, what the other taxing bodies are doing in terms of their major capital, or their major requests for tax line? The, the reason I'm saying that is, is one of the things, what we're talking about is making sure that when we take money and ask for money, that we're being sensitive to the community. So, knowing what the, you know, is, you know, what I'm saying, we, we don't, we're not saying during the meetings, New Trier has got a, you know, we're, we're making the taxes decisions, they have 13% of the budget against their 38%, you know, and the 25%, just so that we can say we're aware of this, to the, to the residents of the, of the village, we're aware of what they're doing, so when we make this request, we're aware of the whole, overall tax line.
There's, there's several arguments that, that are out there.
I think we're aware of it, you know, I mean...
That's correct, Ann.
So, you know, we have, and we, I think we've been the only ones who have been transparent with our budget process, and, you know, I think there are rumors that that referendum that failed last year was an end run around our school project, right, because you have to make people choose between kids and stormwater, and that's a really ugly choice, right? So, I, I just, I, I, I don't feel, Jack, like, it's 100% our responsibility.
No, I'm not saying...
I think that we need to, to, again, and I think that all people do, you know, be thoughtful with our partnering groups, and again, it calls to mind the need to have a central group that really talks about taxes as a whole, and that there shouldn't be, you know, four different levying or five different levying bodies in this community that all can, you know, raise taxes and issue bonds as they would like to, independent of each other. There is no requirement to consult, I think that's what's killing Illinois, and it's going to kill our community, too, if everybody is just super entitled and goes for the max that they can go from, from our community. And I think in this process, my observation has been that we've been incredibly restrained and tried to do this process in a way that partners well with all of our, our friendly taxing fellows, and, so that we can address the real needs, safety, and, and otherwise in the community. So, I mean, I just think that we've done a great job, I have Andy, Chris, Rob, you know, everyone, Steve, Brian, everyone has done a great job on this, but I don't feel it coming back, I'll be honest.
No, I'm not, I'm not criticizing the process or the transparency of the village at all, what I'm saying is, is that when we're discussing this, the, the large tape of the public, can we, we should, we, I think that part of the discussion should be to show that we're aware of what was going on, that Winnetka Public Schools might try again to bring up the, you know, or, so that we can, so that we can say that while we're making this decision as a village council, we're aware of what the other taxing bodies are, are trying to do as well. So, when we come to them and say, we need this money for stormwater, we need this money for infrastructure improvement, for water, for electric, we know, because sometimes you'll hear that from, you guys aren't paying any attention to how much I'm paying in real estate taxes, you're just, you know, we'll yell that like we're 100% of the village as opposed to 12 or 13%. So, I'm not saying, I have no criticism of the budgeting process, it's fine, you know, it's really, really good.
There's been a lot of efforts, Jack, and, and the, the real issue is that, and it's, I've thought a lot about how you combat this, but I haven't come up with a good solution yet, is at the staff level, and, 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 you know, we have some of the best staff around, but they're homies. We, we...
I thought I saw you and Trish hanging out.
We expect them to be homies, okay, as, 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 as...
That's a new, that's a new title.
It means, you know, that...
Well, it's not allowed to go out.
No.
It's called unabashed advocate for our own village.
Right, thank you. Yeah, you're much better at this.
Thank you.
But, I mean, you know, when, when you talk about an announcer on a, on a sportscast being a homie, you know, that even though the team sucks, he's still telling them all the great things, so anyway, yeah, I know it's all over your head. But the reality of it is, is that the staffs for the other taxing bodies are also homies, and regretfully, it, it results in a, in a completely siloed environment. We try to empower our... We try to empower our people, our staff members, to reach out of those silos, but it is so programmed into the DNA of the positions and the whole budgeting process. Regretfully, I'm finding that even with our colleagues, our elected colleagues, that some of that exists as well. I mean, I think we're very enlightened on this issue because we always are talking about how it seems to be a great idea to have these conversations, right? But at the end of the day, you know, I've engaged with elected members of the other taxing bodies who really are just focused on their own little world and they feel it should be to the exclusion of the others because their mission is most important. I heard it clearly during the referendum. You know, I, I think as a group, we did really, did a really great job of avoiding, of being baited into this comparison of stormwater versus education, you know? And trust me, the bait was out there and it was tossed frequently and we didn't bite.
And we shouldn't.
No, of course not, because it's contradictory to what we're here for, right?
And our voter, the one thing I'll say, having been through this for years now, is I have tremendous confidence in our voters in this village, they're extremely up to speed on what's going on. And I have total confidence that one of two things will happen. If they think that this is an inappropriate priority relative to the schools, they will come and tell us that and they will approve whatever counterproposal or whatever proposal the district has. They won't approve a district referendum if they feel like this is creating an undue pressure. Candidly, I don't think we're, we are in a position, as much as we would like to be, to say, here's what our sister bodies have coming up in the next several years. We've not been equipped with that legally. We've certainly tried, but the best thing that we can do is exactly what we've done, which is to be open and upfront that this is our priority, this is how much it's going to cost, and we've been sounding that drum for years now. And I remember that meeting where we kind of put that number out there and you asked if anyone in the room, a packed room, had a problem with it.
That was a good night.
Yeah. And, you know, I'm saying this, and Bob and I, we live on the east side of the village. We stand nothing to gain from this. I think there is a strong consensus in the village that this is the right thing to do. You know, and it's not an east versus west side thing either. I talk about that, but I actually can answer that, that issue, which is, you know, if we have a significant part of the village where home values are depressed because of this problem, that raises our taxes on the east side. So it's absolutely in our interest to do this. Only a government entity can do this. We're uniquely positioned to do this. We have to be able to do this. And then on top of all of that, I don't want us to lose sight of the fact that those other bodies that we're talking about and they're spending priorities, they are our partners in this, they have been very good and very cooperative. And, you know, maybe we'd like to see them move faster at times or, you know, have a stronger sense of urgency, but they're balancing what they have to do. But I just think that's important. They have been our partners in this, so. And they understand whatever they may try to hit taxpayers with, it's going to be viewed in the context of this, and they do have to seek a referendum.
And we don't.
I first of all, I'd like to apologize. I'm so sorry. Maybe I put my feet in the way. Secondly, the point about the fact we don't need to have a referendum anymore, but nevertheless, we've taken seriously our obligations to go to the community as if we have to have a referendum. And I think we need to continue to make that clear to the residents and to the other taxing bodies and, you know, that that is not required of us by law, that we take responsibility seriously and we will not act and just, you know, sit enough there and say that we're going to decide what is on that list. So I think that's important.
No one could accuse us of surprising anybody.
No, 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 but I mean, we have to continually remind ourselves, exactly, so.
When was the Strand study again?
The first one?
2015.
15. It's four years. Of course, 14 years since that village council made a commitment to this community that they would do their best to act like non-home rule 14 years ago. I mean, these are complicated and difficult issues and I agree with you, Penny, that, you know, we have to take that responsibility seriously, but the reality of it is, is try to go out in the street and explain stormwater to somebody in the complexity that we understand it today. And that's the issue is, without education, these become very one-sided and ignorant conversations.
And, but I don't discredit that at all, but we need to behave as if we had to take a referendum. I mean, it is our responsibility to be sure that we can break it down in some way understandable because, you know, it's not simple, but, you know, we're asking a lot of our partners and so we need to be sure that we can explain it.
Okay. Any other things on stormwater? All right, Steve, well, you can stand down. Thank you. Great job. A lot of work over there. Next up is David Shown, I believe. Right, David?
Yes.
He's been waiting here anxiously all morning and half the afternoon.
That would be tab eight?
Tab?
Eight.
Good afternoon.
We're not going to be finished at 2:00.
I was trying like hell, but.
All right, David.
My 2:00.
I'm done. He's a fierce talker.
10 minutes.
Any questions?
I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, but Brian is still behind him yet.
You didn't say central, you said big.
It's only appropriate after you've elected, it's fine, speaking.
Go ahead, David.
So just as a refresher, these are the four functions of the community development department. Planning and zoning, which includes long-range planning, to short-range planning, which includes special uses, variations, those processes, as well as our staff is involved in the zoning review with a building permit application, which then takes us to our other function, building construction activity in terms of reviewing plans for construction and then inspecting them after they're done. And then we have code enforcement and that's construction site management, as well as property maintenance issues and other code compliance items. And then the last area is food service compliance in terms of annual inspections of food service establishments, as well as reviewing plans and inspections for new food service establishments. And then we also assist the village manager's office with economic development activities. This is the organizational chart for the department, divided into two basic functions. One, the planning and zoning aspect, which Ann Clausen leads, and then Brian leads the building permit and inspection component of the department. We have seven full-time employees and then we also have two contractual relationships. SafeBuild does most of our plan review and inspections for building permits. We just recently approved a new contract for them, end of last year. And then we have a contract with a sanitarian to do our food service inspections. Her contract ends this coming year, so we'll be coming back to you for reviewing whether to renew our contract with her or do an RFP. In terms of accomplishments in 2019, again, we continue to work on implementation of the downtown master plan. Talk about streetscape implementation a little more with the business district revitalization fund. And one of our other major achievements was the adoption of a new plan development process and the creation of a new plan development commission. As Fire Chief Burkowski mentioned, we adopted more current building code series this year. And we, as village manager Bayhan noted, next week, we hope to be presenting to you a contract for consulting services to start work on the comprehensive plan. We're currently completing a board and commission training with our zoning and subdivision boards. Holland and Knight has been assisting us with that. And then given that we adopted the new, a new, more current building codes, we have prepared new building permit application forms and instruction sheets, which are on the website now. We're hoping that the public finds them more informational in terms of how to complete applications. So if you receive any feedback regarding that, we'd like to hear about it, to see if we need to tweak them even further. In terms of 2020 goals and objectives, the year will be spent working on the comprehensive plan update. We anticipate that will take us into the early part of 2021. Continue to work on implementation of the master streetscape plan. Again, we'll talk about streetscape implementation with the business revitalization district fund, village-owned property redevelopment, assistant village manager Pierce talked about working on 93 Green Bay Road. We've been assisting with that, continue to assist with that. In terms of building and development regulations, we adopted the new model codes, but we have some other code amendments that we want to work with the other departments on, to our codes related to building and development regulations. We have a stack of old documents in the basement. We need to figure out how to get into electronic document retention system, and so we're working with the village manager's office and finance on establishing that, that would not only benefit our department, but the village as a whole. And then the last three items are our ongoing activities, assisting with economic development, building permit and inspections, and then board commission and support. We now have five boards and commissions that we regularly staff in addition to assisting the village council. In terms of our budget, our budget is down this year by 3.4%. And I'll explain that in more detail. That's the 2019 budget to the 2020 budget is down. In terms of our estimate for this year, it's down approximately $253,000, so 2019 budget compared to 2019 estimate. Thought I'd take a minute to explain that that's basically from the delay from the One Wonetka project. We had permit or plan review and inspection expenses budgeted that we didn't, will not have. And then also with our permits continuing to be down, our SafeBuild plan review and inspection expenses have been lower than budgeted. In terms of breaking our budget down between salaries and benefits, so when we compare the 2019 budget to 2020 budget, we're up 4.7%. And that's mainly due to cost of living increase, also anticipated step increases for a couple of positions, as well as increase in our pension obligations. On services and supplies, between 2019 and 2020, we are down about $103,000. Again, we don't have in the coming year budget, anything budgeted for One Wonetka in terms of plan review and inspections. So that has brought ours down. We've also decreased the amount we've budgeted for SafeBuild plan reviews and inspections. And then we do have some increases for the comprehensive plan update and Holland and Knight services, but those have been more offset by the decreases. Our budget is 55% salaries. About 13% are legal services. The bulk of that is Holland and Knight's retainer for the village. That's all within the community development budget. We've also slightly increased that for non-retainer items. We have not budgeted for those in the past, but given the past couple of years, we've had those items such as new codes. So when we went through the building code adoption, that's not covered by a retainer. The plan development ordinance was not, and then other legal fees. So we've increased that slightly. And then I'll talk a little more about third-party services and then the remainder are other services and supplies. In terms of third-party services, we budgeted $250,000 for SafeBuild, so that's a good portion of the third-party services. We've budgeted $125,000 this coming year for the comprehensive plan and anticipate additional expenses into the next year. And then the rest is a further breakdown of what those third-party services are. In terms of building permit revenue, Tim had mentioned earlier regarding down in permit revenue this year because it doesn't include the anticipated revenue from the One Wonetka project. And then our other permits have also been down. For 2020, again, it's down because there's no One Wonetka revenue budgeted, or I should say the former One Wonetka site budgeted, and we anticipate that other permit revenue will continue to be down. This chart just shows issued building permits and as you can see, there's been a slow decline in permit activity, which has also been reflected on the SafeBuild side in terms of lower So key takeaways, our overall budget is 1.74 million, a decrease of 3.4%. Salaries and benefits increased 4.5%, while services and supplies have decreased 11.7%. Be happy to take any questions now before I move into the business district revitalization fund.
So the expenditure there, that weren't spent for the One Wonetka, did that budget only just go back to the general fund? Where did it end up or how does that get attributed?
So there was revenue and expenses for One Wonetka, just about offset each other. So it really, the fact that it went or not impacted.
What you can't get back are the years of your life.
Well, actually, I was wondering, reflecting back on the One Wonetka process, how much staff time, you know, looking into the future when we would have another plan development project, how much staff time did it end up taking? I mean, was it more or less than you had anticipated? How did that all fall out?
Again, I've been here for two years, so I wasn't through all of it. In terms of what I participated in, I don't think it was an abnormal amount of time, given the scale of the project. But again, I came in at the tail end and the revision of the project, so I, there was probably a little more time spent on it than you would anticipate. Now, changing what I said, but in terms of, there was a lot of hand-holding with the project.
But your experience is that most applicants aren't that inept and disorganized, right?
Or is it? Applicants can be more organized, yes.
But given the size of the project, and obviously every application and every project is going to be different, you know, do we need to rearrange our annual program when we get another proposal in for a project this big? Or, you know, is it absorbable within the staff that we have and the workload, the normal workload?
No, I think it's manageable within our workload. I think it's some of the other projects. It's the comprehensive plan project. We're talking about Hubbard Woods, working on a design process for the streetscape. Some of those other projects, you know, we're going to have to really work on managing our time, but I think in terms of a project like that, that we can take it through the process. And when One Wonetka comes back, that site comes back, I think we're all very familiar with what needs to happen infrastructure-wise. And I think developers will have a better idea of what the village finds as acceptable for development. So in that regard, it won't take as much time in terms of that project or shouldn't.
So I would say that having been around for the full scope of One Wonetka, there were peaks and valleys. were peaks and valleys, and sometimes the peaks of the project hit while we had other things going on, like the downtown master plan or other things in other departments. So it's always a juggling act in terms of time allocation. I would say overall, though, once it was, at least the first part of it was dealt with and in the queue, it was more manageable. I would say it was more of an adverse impact on board member times and the community's time to track it all with all the changes. But when David came in and took a deep dive in it, and then there was a revision, yeah, there was a spike, but then it leveled off a little bit.
Okay.
And it does cascade across other departments because Public Works and Water Electric has to be involved.
Right, yeah, and so I'm just asking in terms of future, you know, thinking ahead to the future.
Sure.
New process will tighten a lot of that up, too, so.
Yeah.
And if that does come back or another larger project, the budget should be self-reimbated because it's going to be income versus job.
Well, not from a revenue standpoint, but literally from the staff load.
Talking about revenue.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and I was talking about more of a staff load.
We don't need to have that budget because we'll have easy offset hopefully.
Along those lines, Dave, or Tim, were we fully reimbursed for all expenses that we incurred with One Winnetka?
Yes, yes. We received a final payment of $85,582 a couple of weeks ago. That included past due utilities, late payment penalties, service disconnection fees, false alarms, and the negative balance on the legal escrow, and that was, the legal escrow was another $21,000.
That come in Canadian dollars?
It came in, and I checked with Tim yesterday, and he said the check had cleared, so.
That's amazing. What a relief. Maybe serve futures.
The only thing, I do want to mention.
But there's still ongoing code enforcement going on.
I mean, it's with any permit, but One Winnetka, given the size of the permit fee, it's all going to come in one fiscal year, but the expenses are going to go over a couple of years.
Interesting.
So the first year, it'll be a positive. The second year, we won't have that revenue. So it's not in a year offset, but overall, it should be.
Is that earmarked? No, it's just it's put into the general fund, but, you know, I mean, if we roll it over in our own minds, okay.
The permit, what we can see is, do you think that's like a long-term trend or any sense of growth?
What we hear from contractors is that it is slower, and they're not seeing a pickup right now, so.
And we don't, you know, I know we've looked at comparable figures from other North Shore communities that's in line, but we don't really, we don't have any specific figures.
I don't have any specific.
Okay, something you can look into.
Any other questions to David on the community development budget? All right, business district revitalization.
Okay, so first, we'll talk about projects for the coming year. These are the streetscape projects, the first tour construction. The first one is completion of the Chestnut project that occurred this year. We anticipate some expenses in next year. And then we would construct Elm Street between Green Bay Road and Birch. Also, next year, we would do the engineering work for Lincoln Avenue north of Elm. And we'd also engage in a process of looking at a streetscape plan like we did for the Elm Street District for Hubbard Woods, but given that a good portion of that is Green Bay Road, we need to further explore a jurisdictional transfer for Green Bay Road, and if that's the route we want to proceed, because that'll have a big impact on whether, on the types of improvements we'll be able to make on that roadway. And then the last item is an annual amount we budget for maintenance in our three commercial districts in terms of sidewalks and public streetscape. Other projects we have funds budgeted for, 93 Green Bay Road in terms of its redevelopment, and if there are expenses, the village may need to be involved with the redevelopment of that. We've budgeted some money for streetscape stakeholder engagement activities. Part of this would be used similar to what we did in West Elm, meeting with the businesses, getting their final input or their additional input on the final improvements. And then the last item is parking signage, as with West Elm. We made some changes to parking time limits and other items, so there's some funds to do that also at East Elm. In terms of the five-year capital plan, it's broken down here. The first categories are, first category are other items. We talked about them. Elm Street Business District, to continue to work on that. I just would like to point out, however, in year 2024, we don't have a budget amount for Green Bay Road, that portion that goes through Elm Street Business District, because again, we don't know if we're going to do a JT or not, and then what the ultimate design would be. And then the last major category is the Hubbard Woods Business District. Again, we would anticipate one year for design, once we come up with a streetscape concept, and then two years of construction. Again, we don't have those numbers for the engineering design or streetscape construction because we don't know what the design is. So even though at the end of 2024, oh, I'm getting ahead of myself. So this is the fund balance. Just two items to note, it's being funded with $1.1 million in property tax revenue a year, and then as with this year, next year, there will be a chance for the general fund, from the general fund of $550,000. At the end of 2024, there's a cash balance of 3.1 million, but again, we don't have the estimates for Green Bay Road and the Elm Street Business District or the streetscape improvement in Hubbard Woods. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Can we do Elm Street? Do the streetscape?
Who's talking?
So we're underway right now with the engineering, with the idea that we get it out in the January, February timeframe and start construction as soon as we're ready for 2021.
Yeah, I think the idea is to get it done. What we're hearing from the merchants, even though.
They want it done.
Yeah, let's just get the heck out of there. And actually, this spring, you know, if we can start March, April, right, we could be out of there here by the summer months, and then it'd be behind us.
Did you say 2021?
I'm sorry, did I say 21?
21. Okay, yeah, we're talking.
Next year.
Next spring, yeah.
So, and that's the part that is, goes from.
The 93 Green Bay Road, so in the capital thing, you know, it says that we've, you know, we've already engaged a consultant to perform additional environmental testing, da-da-da-da. That's not part of this $50,000, right?
No, it's not.
That's in 2019 cost.
We may end up incurring some of the costs of that environmental consultant, but most of it should be reimbursable from the lost funding if there's any additional remediation or tank problems, but we have to pay the upfront cost. But they have, they're still waiting on IDOT approval just to do a boring, so it's going very slow.
But that's not what this $50,000 is for.
No, this is for, once the council has seen the proposals and we've had a discussion if there's additional work or things the council wants us to do to facilitate that development or some contribution, we wanted a starting point for that. I also had questions whether we would need to have some structural assessment of the building. I've gathered some quotes on that, but we haven't pulled the trigger because, you know, some people wanted to demolish the building, and some people want to use part of it. So those were the type of things I was thinking about. I did environmental this year, got a new platter survey, so we've got like the base stuff ready, but depending on what you guys want to do with the proposal we received, I wanted something in case you wanted additional work.
Yeah, there's no hard numbers around that, the placeholder sort of a figure that may not come to pass.
May not come to pass, but I didn't want there to not be something if you guys wanted to move.
A good example is, you know, when we see the proposals, if somebody wants to keep the building and they want a really aggressive either lease rate or purchase price, you might say, you take care of all the structural verifications and, you know, we don't want anything to do with it. By the way, we're going to make you indemnify us along the way as well, so.
But you never know until you get to that point, and we are going to start seeing some discussions on this very soon.
Yes, you should get a, you'll get a distribution. In 2019. Yes, you'll get a distribution this week, and we plan on a couple of discussions in the first part of November.
November sounds busy.
It will be.
The jurisdictional transfer issue, I've heard Steve talk about that, and you're going to move that lead from IDOT to.
Correct.
Is that for us to gain more control over how we can remodel and rebuild?
That's how you get it for free. You do it on their nickel once, and then we take possession of it.
So the jurisdictional transfer is generally now negotiated, and municipalities are going to take it on in perpetuity. We want to get, typically, a municipality will have IDOT invest as much as they possibly can before we'll take responsibility for it, which would be full road reconstruction, as much as they put into sidewalks, whatever you can possibly get.
So we seem to be grabbing up, I mean, this more than it would be in the past, I would think in terms of transfers of state road.
Right, right, but there's also severe restrictions in Hubbard Woods in terms of what we can do because it's a state road, and that, and the state right of way goes up to the buildings, so.
We had a lot of discussion on this previous, and I'll try to get you, and I'll try to get you up to speed on the whole subject because it's important, well, you're going to be around for a while, so, you know, you should know how this works, so.
But it is, I mean, they'll usually start with a baseline, and it is a negotiation, and it takes a while to get it there, but it's very doable. A lot of towns do it.
Witness, Sheridan Road in Kennelworth, Sheridan Road in Womatt, Sheridan Road in Evanston. A bad, a really, really bad, bad example is Green Bay Road in Womatt.
The Green Bay Road in Kennelworth, or Glencoe is nice.
Green Bay Road in Kennelworth. I mean, and Glencoe is really nice, you know, with the split and.
Then they own that as opposed to the state.
They did it under JT.
And then there was, a long time ago, there was that portion of Willow Road, you know, there was a segment of Willow Road that was rehabilitated and then turned over.
So.
A town I used to live in, they had a problem. It was Lake Street through Oak Park and River Forest, and River Forest had parks on the south side of the street, and the state wouldn't let them put stop signs on or stoplights to let children cross across the street because of the state control. Village there never moved to take possession of this street. It's interesting.
Can we say Northfield? Yikes.
Anything else?
Thanks.
Good job, David. Thank you.
Way to go. You waited all day for that. Now the fun really begins. Maybe we should just take a real quick break so everybody can.
Yeah, that's fine.
Go back to that $93.
Oh, no, that's a restart of the day. $93, clearly I'm going to watch the videos.
What's that?
The increase in our costs?
Well, there we go.
How about this, if he can make it through his entire presentation in 10 minutes, then we'll be done with it.
The problem is Brian doesn't talk fast. I mean, it's just, it's just one of these physical issues. You're very calm and.
Thank you.
But not together.
Here's another way to message that $1.58, $13.
I don't care. The fact is, the $1.58 is a distorted number because if anybody's using it as a comparative, we should be able to use it as a comparative and say, if you're living in Glencoe, you're getting hosed, and if you're living in Womatt, you're getting hosed, and if you're living in Northfield, you're getting hosed, and at least make it equal equal because they all got Commonwealth.
But not together. Anyway, so it just, it.
I mean, it's not fair to send that message out there.
I know, I know, I mean, it's usually attached. Right, I know.
Because I left so early that I was like, whoa. Anyway, so I felt terrible.
So what's the major discussion? I mean, not a lot, I mean, we had a discussion on pensions because.
Well, it's better to show that than to show the levy.
We didn't really resolve it, so we'll have a study session on pensions.
$90, and by the way, if you were with Commonwealth Edison, you'd be spending $50 more than what raises from the bill.
Get it back from Illinois, so there was like a potential to move some stuff from there. So what do we, what do we move around? It's in the boat budget, just so that he's going to come back with it.
Okay, great.
Say that again, Brian?
And then, anything else? Did anything else happen to him? I don't think so. It's kind of pretty non-controversial. There's a car that they delayed getting.
Yeah, I know, you know, I mean, it's because they do such a great job. I mean, you're frozen, it's just learning.
Right, it's really, really well.
It's had a lot of conversation about it.
But they've got a lot of capital.
Because they do such a great job of, so it's a fuel tax.
And we don't have a tax increase on the table, so I think some of us are getting to a point where we think we probably should have a little bit of a tax increase. Well, right. I mean, I think that that's right. So, because like, you know, if we're going to try to make the pension obligations, we haven't had a tax increase in, you know, it's going to be a decade, then people are going to be like, what? You get to raise taxes in that first? But I guess also the big thing is to ensure that you're here for that.
That's in the expenses that's remitted for administrative services.
Yeah, so not a lot. You have to stop.
It's not going away, Brian, so you can keep beating that drum all you want, it's not going away, so.
Do we know what the.
Rob's brain watching.
We did talk about that, we did talk, we had a little chat about the Green Bay Trail, the fact that those which is on, we did underneath, and that we don't really have a budget to do that, but we did agree to have a study for next year about what should we do with the Green Bay bike trail and focus ourselves on that. That's awesome, so that was a good addition.
Thank you, that's huge.
Yeah, okay. But otherwise, no, it's pretty.
It doesn't carry that now.
He's carrying some.
We have to do it, but.
We kept it out until we made sure, but there should be the portion. He's not going to be out there. I just, I'd like to get it out there.
I know, there's certain things, like, I've been married for 32 years now, and there's still shit I bring up to my wife, even though I know it's a was-don't, saying I'm never going to win, but I keep bringing it up, and I keep getting slapback out of it. I'm not angry about it, or even care about it, but it's reflexive. I just don't like, it doesn't, it's meaningless.
No, what I'm talking about is, here's, oh, here's the $890 in my notes, and there's a line item in the budget. In the budget, it's not going to show on the cabinet. In the budget, there's a line item called administrative services. That's 856. That's like, because I don't have my own financial, I don't have my own, I don't have my own ETRs. It's an expense. So you're getting, you're going to take 1 million here, and you get another 856. That's what I see. So there's 1.9 of these budgets that come back. That's what I see. So we talked about this, okay, but in this number, 956, this one is in the budget, so you can mind, if you want, I'll find a way after. There's a similar one in the water.
I have a question. It's more to do with the presentation, you know, what it is we put out for, on our website for public consumption. Do we do sort of more of a narrative for residents to put on the website?
We do the entire budget, and part of that is the.
Yeah, right.
We also, remember last year, we did a.
Yeah, right.
Lots of water, we got lots of water.
We did that at the power.
Water.
Because, um. Yeah, because the. The only, the only, you know, the only reason I ask this, because I think the letter of transmittal is really awesome, um, but as I'm reading it, I'm thinking about it from, from a resident's point of view, it's, you know, like, some places, it would be great, um, just for residents if we could have.
Okay, are you ready? I'm ready.
I'm ready. So are you setting the bogies?
All right, we're back in session.
It's time for the elemental guy.
The what?
Fire and water.
Fire and water.
One time I was referred to as the cable guy, and there was some kind of.
Wow, wow.
Okay, if I begin?
All right, let it rip.
So, good afternoon, we moved past the morning, and we're still not in the evening, so I'll try to keep us moving forward. It's from organizational chart, water and electric comprises thirty-four point seven five full-time.
Tab eleven.
Tab eleven, yes, I had that, I'm sorry, tab eleven, page two oh eight. And then, if you're actually gonna carve into the details, it's Fund Five Hundred is the electric fund. So, it's, uh, the organization for not only this year, but moving into twenty twenty, staff with thirty-four point seven five, full-time equivalents, and the staffing plan that's proposed, proposed in the budget before you is the same, so we had for two thousand nineteen. The only other notable change, I mean, for those that are not real familiar, the plant operators are still, we still have operators that are first in training, are running both the water plant and the electric plant. I do anticipate, one, maybe two retirements in the organization this year, so we'll be counting on our HR department to help us fill some vacancies as those become parent. We're tasked with being, providing the Village Weneka with adequate power supplies, making sure we can get it to your homes, and trying to minimize outages, um, and do it at a reliable competitive price. The total, uh, the business, the, uh, electric fund is a business or an enterprise fund, so it's basically relies solely on providing electricity to the residents and businesses of Weneka. As we go through the budget, you'll see it's nearly a nineteen million dollar budget in its totality. Some of the things, uh, that were accomplished this year is we had a healthy portfolio of maintenance work, which included thermography assessments, looking for hotspots on, uh, both overhead and underground equipment, line clearance or tree trimming, and then actually wood pole inspections. We hooked up thirty-six new electric services, we responded to, it says thirty-one, but after last weekend, we killed another squirrel, so we're now at thirty-two electrical interruptions. We brought, uh, to close three, while not all in this year, but some ran over, we closed out three fire suppression projects, so we have one substation budgeted later on, and I think it's twenty twenty-one to finish. Uh, we completed the overhaul turbine number six, and it went back into service a little later than we had hoped for, but was back in service, uh, earning capacity credits with IMEA. Placed over a mile of aging cable, and one of the things I'm concerned about, or continue to be concerned about, is we don't let the electric system lapse into what happened with the water system, so we're constantly trying to renew our infrastructure. We made sure we got out of the way of Public Works before they did the bridge deck, we had one five KV circuit that originates on the east side, and goes to the west side and serves some neighbors in public safety, the two chiefs here were a little anxious about having electricity, which was done before they started the bridge deck. Going forward, um, at the highest level, no change in the maintenance portfolio, so I know there's some concerns about, are we cutting, as you see budgets, are we cutting budgets or making short-sighted decisions? We're keeping the maintenance portfolios, we're still planning on serving our customers for new business connections. We do have, uh, substation work identified, and we're still making, uh, maintenance improvements down at the electric plant. Noteworthy items, um, and we'll talk about them more under, uh, as we get into the presentation here, but improvements are Northfield substations, called Northfield because it's physically located in Northfield, near the, uh, Nutria Campus in Northfield. Uh, we, we are still planning to replace nearly a mile of underground cable. We're looking at continuing our budget, uh, for new service installations, we did question, it was earlier, is there is no one Weneka, uh, revenue or expense in this budget that's being presented to you? Uh, we continue the maintenance, and there is no, as staff is a sizable cost of, of the organization, there's no staffing changes. From a sales perspective, last year's budget was based on a little over a hundred and twenty-two million kilowatt hours of sales to not only residential customers, but the businesses, school, and government. The green font's a little difficult to read, but we use a three-year average approach, uh, so we're looking at a hundred and twenty-four thousand two hundred and eighty-eight million, uh, hundred twenty-four million two hundred and eighty-eight kilowatt hours is what we're projecting, so, uh, it's in line, I think, with, uh, when you look at this trend line, that's what we're projecting. This slide is, uh, taken from your budget books, and I'm not gonna go through every number, but I wanna call out some highlights on it, and then we'll spend some, uh, more specific time on capital. So to, uh, we see, although we're doing a two point four eight across all customer classes rate increase, we see it, revenue doesn't go up as much as expected, and as noted in the community development's presentation, we're seeing new business service connections drop, and then also we saw, uh, we had three hundred and sixty-six thousand of revenue budgeted for one Weneka, so with taking that out, we see a decline in our overall revenue beyond kilowatt hour sales. There was some discussion, uh, so salaries is typical to my peer group, we have merit increases, we have the COLA, and we have an IMRF contribution. Uh, we, uh, tried to take a hard-line approach on, uh, supplies and services, and we were able to get a reduction of four point four percent. Um, so there is some cost containment effort going on, we made some, I think, appropriate decisions on some deferrals of some work, and of things like a replacement of a pickup truck to a future year. Some of the discussion that was happening before we started, uh, there is, we continued, our purchase, let me back up, for purchase power. Uh, this year, we will see, uh, we're seeing a purchase power increase of one point six percent, and that's two pieces moving at the same time, a higher number of units, but we will see a little over a one percent increase in our unit price from IMEA in this budget. That being said, we went, I think it was two, the two previous years with not changing our unit price from IMEA, so this year, we are gonna see a little over one percent from our wholesale power supplier that will, is predicted to move into our, our unit cost. Payment of lieu of taxes is conscious, is a, going back to the general fund, it's from, it's a transfer from the electric fund to the general fund, and it's based on the, um, CAFR, the results of sales for the previously audited years, so our sales were higher, so there's an increase in what, uh, the payment in lieu of taxes is, that's being remitted to the general fund, so there's a little over a million dollars that will move back to the general fund from the electric utility. And then capital, I'll go through that in more detail, but you've got three point two million dollars of, of capital, uh, that, uh, projects that will be presenting for your consideration today to move forward on. Sorry. So again, uh, to give you a kind of a comparison approach, uh, we budgeted three point six million in, in twenty nineteen. Uh, we look like we're gonna come in at about two point six, we had some deferrals, the switchgear project is not gonna actually land until next year, uh, so that's three point two million. Um, the, one of the things that we talk about when Tim and I meet is the fund balance, or I call it the cash reserve of the utility. So the audited results for twenty eighteen, we were at seven point three million, we're gonna close almost at seven point three million, and projecting year end, uh, next year, at the end of twenty twenty, is six point four million. I will tell you that we, this does draw down as we complete the Northfield, uh, improvements, and that was consistent with our study, our discussions during the rate study using the sixteen seventeen timeframe. We are still above, uh, four-month operating fund balance pal, policy, excuse me, of five point two million. So before I plug ahead, is there any other questions on that? So we're using, uh, results from the rate study to move forward, we'll have, I think there's one more year rates, and then from there, we'll have to make a decision whether we, staff calculates rates, or we go out again for another rate study.
Brian, what's the consulting services?
Pardon?
What's the consulting you have in here?
Oh, so consulting services, I actually, I think I have a slide on that, I can walk through, but consulting services, we have generally, we'll have, I have some permitting for the air permit that we use consulting services on, we still haven't gotten resolution on our water permit. We have, I carry some contingency for relay protection, and then we also have a jointly funded project, what's between water, electric, and the general fund for, it's trying to lay out the framework for automated metering.
So, so those are, those are required third-party consulting services?
Two of them are required, I don't think we have the internal technical resources to do, and two are optional, if you would elect, elect that you don't wanna pursue those initiatives, and one's kind of contingency-driven, that if something happens that beyond the technical capabilities of the utility, we would reach out.
The other reason I bring that up is, there, every, every group seems to have consulting expenses, and we just sort of say, all right, and all, okay, gotta do it, gotta do it, but I think if you added up all our consulting, it's probably a pretty big number, and I, you know.
But the question is, how much of it is for outside, um, you know, like engineering expertise that we don't have in-house, and how much is for, you know, sort of like studies of, I mean, there are two different, two different types of consultants.
Two different types of consulting, that is correct.
But to Bob's point, it would be kind of cool to get a pie chart, because David had all the pie charts in his, uh, presentation that showed, uh, type of expenditure across the different, uh, areas, so that you could take police and fire and electric and, and all that, and put them all in one chart by kind of expenditure.
That's a great idea.
Right?
Yeah, but they're all different consultants, so.
But that's okay, but just to understand what.
Not by department?
But, but, but just to understand, like, how much are we spending on office supplies, and how much are we spending on consultants, and how much are we spending on personnel across the entire thing, just to re-shift it and put the buckets together, you know? I mean, it might not be useful, but it might be, you don't know what you'll see.
Graphics, graphics are always another way of looking at it.
A lot of color.
Since David's the only one who knows how to use that feature on Excel. You just got a homework assignment.
I was, I was thinking that David just got an opportunity.
Consultants that could be shared, you get that?
Yeah.
Partly, partly.
On page nine, there is, of the transmittal, there, it does show it in dollar form, in some buckets, salaries, and, uh, services, and some.
So it's kind of a, yeah.
It's not a pie chart, and I don't know, it's a question.
Pie charts are easier to read.
We could probably drill down a little further on the buckets, it was a pretty broad.
David, David was like industry-leading today on this chart, so.
Hey, Brian?
Yes, sir.
And maybe, is it Tim's question? So before we got going, you said, a million-dollar payment lieu goes back into the general fund.
That's correct.
And then there's this, how, where is that shown in the general fund? Uh, page, that, this, this, this positive, um, net million dollars, I mean, I see.
Page thirty-eight, there's a lineup of interfund transfers and payment in lieu of taxes, um, and it shows we have four different payment loews from each of the different enterprise funds.
Page thirty-eight?
With the exception of stormwater.
Why is stormwater not in here? Because it's a completely separate, it's not going back into the general fund.
Stormwater, there would, in payment in lieu of taxes was never implemented.
Oh.
As part of the creation of, I don't know, that's something from the stormwater? From the stormwater, yeah.
The initial, uh, setup of the stormwater utility was essentially to cover debt service and operations and maintenance only.
Got it.
But it was, uh, anticipated that as the stormwater utility developed and grew.
It could do that.
If we could start to look for, um, administrative overhead.
Got it.
Okay, will it, Brian, pick it up again, I'm gonna, you can jump in on that.
Okay. Yeah, I, I was just gonna say, so, there's a million six in payment in lieu coming back from the enterprise funds. Would that be, how would you, for a layman, how would you, would you say that's the profit of our enterprise funds coming back?
Oh, it's private, it's the, if they were a private utility, there would be a utility tax assessed, like one shore gas, there's a utility tax.
Okay.
That's remitted to the general fund.
Right.
And since they're accounting-wise, they're treated as if they're almost separate entities, there's this utility tax charged to them, right, and since we don't put a tax on ourselves, it's probably payment in lieu of this tax.
It also deals with property as well, because if ComEd had a facility.
Yeah, the plant, if that was a private entity, there would be a huge property tax for the, for the power plant, for example, it's not on, it, there is.
If it was Commonwealth Edison, we'd be charging a tax.
There would be, yeah, there would be part of the tax rolls, and there would be some property tax revenue coming in, there would be utility taxes coming in.
Just like we had Commonwealth Edison, you look on your bill, there's all sorts of.
There's, you'd have a franchise fee as well.
And a franchise.
You'd have a franchise fee based on whatever you negotiated for the village.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so the slide here is, uh, similar to the ones I present in the past, so the rate consultant set up, the average rate adjustment was two point four eight. Is, uh, the goal, for, for those of you who are here for the rate study, was they set a bandwidth of plus or minus one percent, so this is across the established rate classes that are in our code. So residential customer will see nominally a two point two percent rate increase for the electric rates that are proposed before you. Commercial customers would see two point seven five.
So is this how you're getting back your, your pile up here, by charging three point four percent on the streetlights?
Oh, no, actually, that's, you know, that's a, that's a misnomer, because the three point four percent is in.
Biggest rate.
You know what, but that's charging myself, which is the irony of it. So, that's another one of those items that, there's been ongoing discussions, so that's actually a cost that's in the budget, is the kilowatt hour cost of electric, is actually, we do keep track of it from a rate perspective, but there's an off, exactly offsetting expense in the utility side for that. So, yeah, it is an irony, the highest rate increase is on myself, that is, that is a true irony.
That's because we hand him a stick every year, and he hits himself with it, there we go.
Well, I try, that's one of those. That's one of those items I keep trying to, to negotiate, and Rob just doesn't give me an appointment on. All right, so this slide is, and again, the majority of the revenues, of revenue is related to our residential customers, and most of our customers. So this is a slide that shows where we're at today, and you, so there's a monthly service charge, and there's, then, similar to like a water component, there's the volume, how many kilowatt hours you use, we also have a summer rate and a winter rate, so the majority of our customers are single-phase electric service customers, that's your two hundred amp service, they're gonna move from fifteen dollars and forty-six cents a month to sixteen dollars and forty-six cents a month. The winter months is gonna move from eleven point eight cents to twelve point one cents per kilowatt hour. The summer months, which are generally June, July, August, September, four summer months, as defined by the village code, will go from thirteen point two to thirteen point four cents. When you look at a fifteen thousand one hundred and fifty-eight typical, kilowatt hour typical customer, that's an increase of forty-five dollars and sixteen cents. And then, how that compares, you'll see from Weneka in twenty nineteen, where we go in Weneka twenty twenty, and interesting enough, there was a couple of different manipulations on ComEd's rates in twenty nineteen, which resulted in actually a slight decrease through their, when they, when the IPA, the Illinois Power Authority, when it was all cranked out, so there was actually a slight decrease at one point, so they actually, when I go back and look at where they're at today, and snap it with the October twenty nineteen rate, so as a ComEd customer using that rate, typical franchise fees around you here in the North Shore, that would be two thousand seventy-five dollars is what, for the same fifteen thousand one hundred and fifty-eight kilowatt hours.
But does that include the taxes that they have to pay back to the municipality?
That includes the, so how I compare it is I look at, yeah, that includes taxes, franchise fees, energy efficiency, environmental recovery, and, uh, yeah, energy efficiency, all those, and I take it back, and I basically recalculate fifteen thousand one hundred and fifty-eight kilowatt hours, I look at the franchise fees and taxes that, like Glenview, Kennelworth, and Northfield, I think are the, my, ones that I average those together, and what they're levying for, for both franchise and municipal tax.
Pretty good deal.
So, this ComEd's rate probably will go up, you can't, I can't guarantee that, there'll be another rate setting, probably the June timeframe is when it would move again.
So it's sort of a stutter step.
So you're comparing your twenty-one forty-seven for the whole year of
Who does raises when?
Twenty, twenty twenty, and you're, I'm giving you a comparison to where you're at in October twenty nineteen. And just, Rob asked this question earlier, since I started with the village, we haven't always been low. It's been, let's be competitive while making, you know, appropriate choices on the infrastructure and service level.
Yeah, if we do a service comparison, that would be.
So there's, there's moving through the electric utilities, one point eight million dollars that coming back to the general fund, so you've got the payment in lieu of taxes, and there's an administrative transfer fee that helps offset the services that I get from Village Hall that don't reside in my organization, so I don't have my own HR staff, I don't have my own finance team, I don't have my strategic director, I don't have my own utility billing, so we're remitting back eight hundred and, I think it was eight hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars to offset the cost of those services to Village Hall.
So at the end of the day, it's one point eight million dollars that we don't have to love.
Right.
That somebody living in Glenview, or somebody living in Womet, or somebody living in Northfield would have to love it for the same, for the same other village services.
Yeah, so we can't just look at the ComEd, right?
Yeah, so we can't just look at the ComEd rate, because my first thing is like, why don't we just use ComEd?
Yeah, right, right.
Twenty-six bucks.
Right, exactly.
No, but the reality of it is.
One point eight million.
Also.
We don't have to levy.
Right, and also when you look at reliability of service, that would be another thing that's hugely in our favor.
I like the yellow trucks too.
Thank you. So wholesale power is my largest expense, so we're looking at eight point six million dollars. The new rate that we're projecting for the year is a unit cost from IMEA, this is after capacity credits, is six point seven cents. That's changed from six point six cents in twenty nineteen and twenty eighteen. We're looking at purchases of a hundred and twenty-eight million, five hundred and twenty-one thousand. The reason purchases are higher than sales is because there's a loss factor in the system. So you're always buying more than you're actually selling, around, say, four percent. Maintenance programs, again, I won't go through every one, but we're spending two hundred, these are select items that you, and if there's anything in the budget book that I don't flag for at a high level discussion and you want to delve into, let me know. But in general, we're keeping the same maintenance portfolios that we had in twenty nineteen. So we're gonna do line clearance, we're doing thermography, we're doing wood pole inspections. We have one addition this year, is we're due to, again, to do substation battery testing. This is for transmission reliability standards and is part of what we have to do on a periodic basis. At the electric plant, there's two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars of, let's say, higher visibility items that might be becoming before you at the village council. We already talked about, I think it was last meeting where we did one of the two turbochargers on one of the diesel units. We'll be bringing another one before for thirty thousand. We have, we carry money for tube repairs because we'll be making emergent repairs throughout the year. And then other general maintenance pieces for the electric plant. I don't have a slide on specifically, but I want to call to your attention and remind you that from the capacity credits, which lowers our wholesale bill, diesels and steam, we generally get about one point five million dollars of capacity credits. So two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars sounds like a lot of expense, but we're bringing in one million, one point five million if we can keep the units running as part of our contract. And that offsets, that's where we get to that six point seven cents kilowatt hour.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Just back to the earlier page, when we're talking about what you're gonna do in terms of maintenance programs, there's nothing in here about varying the electrical lines. And I know that you do that for new construction, or people pay their own, or people can pay their own as a community to bury the lines, correct?
Correct.
We don't have any incentive on that program, right?
There's no, yeah, there's no incentive for like, if you approach me about your street wanting to do it, there's not a budgetary offset for an incentive to encourage you to do it.
Okay, and then just in terms of pole relocation because of traffic sightlines, some poles, when you get to the corner, you really can't see. And I know the one actually on my corner, when I am going to Hibbert from Kent, that pole is right in the way, you can't see a thing. And so it's been there forever, there's nothing wrong with the pole, but I don't know how many other poles like that there are in the village. And I don't know if we have any kind of maintenance program to say that we should move that because of the sightlines around it.
So we can look at those, there's gonna, some of those things become potentially beyond the cost that the electric utility is gonna bear. The village, depending on the situation, and if we would have a solid case, we may or may not incur costs from AT&amp;T and Comcast. Because AT&amp;T is a joint owner of ninety-eight or ninety-nine percent of the utility poles. So we'd have to present to them a compelling case that it needs to be moved and that we could cite some specific technical reason why it had to be moved. Otherwise, we'd be moving in it and we'd have to probably bear part of that, their cost they would incur.
Okay, and this isn't on here, but one thing that we don't talk about in the infrastructure of the village is access to wireless, you know, to whatever it is, the phone service stuff. And it's particularly bad in the village, I would say, like compared to other villages. And I don't know how we deal with that. I mean, if they're renting poles from us for AT&amp;T for their infrastructure, why isn't there better service in the village?
So I think two ways, so one, the electric utility probably doesn't have, let's say, proverbial horse in that game to compel them to do that. I know the village has in the past reached out and said, we're getting complaints, we want people to, your organizations to take a more assertive role in providing better level of service. At the, at a different level, because I'm privy to where they're gonna be putting stuff on our utility poles, there's eight, seven well in flight small cells with Verizon. They've identified eight locations and then probably another six with AT&amp;T that they're scoping out and plan to bring forward at different points in the future, so. There'll be fourteen, yeah, there'll be fourteen small cells probably in Winneka in the next two or three years. That should help.
Right now, the AT&amp;T is just over there and over there.
Yeah.
Well, there's, there's a difference between the cell service and the residential service, and the residential service is a huge issue as well.
Now.
That's where I live.
With the.
But isn't that weird, that tower is right at McDonald's.
Well, no, but even all the way down tower into Hibbert, it's very dead in there.
The tower's right there, how's that happen?
So here's a question, and certainly I think it's an issue with the residential service as well, because the really, because AT&amp;T is not, their services provided in Winneka are.
Crap.
Bad, yeah, because they haven't invested in covering us. So do we have any leverage or ability to?
Are you referring to internet service or phone service?
Yeah, yeah, right, because.
You're referring to internet service.
Yeah, because you can either, no, it's, what do they call it, it's their.
Fiber optic.
Fiber optic, yeah, so they're.
U-verse.
Yeah, they're U-verse, right.
Older generation of it.
Right, and so that, they don't have the infrastructure in Winneka to cover Winneka. And they've made, I mean, they've made a decision not to do it.
They've actually invested less in the U-verse technology and more towards 5G, as I understand it. But there's, the primary player for internet access is.
Well, I mean, it used to be, it used to be AT&amp;T was, but now it isn't, it's Comcast. And so, so will 5G going forward, will that provide the residential?
Provide access, it'll provide better coverage for cellular use. It's not, I don't believe it would be your primary internet provider.
I mean, because it's really complicated, because, you know, basically Comcast has, you know, they have a bit of a monopoly here because AT&amp;T, both in terms of cellular service and in terms of residential service, is not reliable, so.
There's pockets where AT&amp;T is here, but it's not, you're right, it's not as prevalent as Comcast.
Yeah, I mean, I feel, well, I mean, in my house, I can't, I had to go back to a landline for, because I literally wasn't getting service. So I don't know if there's any responsibility that we have to ensure that people have access to good service, I don't know. I mean, so I'm just throwing that out there.
Verizon has, generally our village contracts are with Verizon for cellular service and I found them to be pretty decent for being in the community. But when you're talking about internet access, there had been efforts in the past to encourage AT&amp;T to roll out more. But you're advocating with a giant.
Yeah, yeah, it is, it's a, it's a, yeah, it's a municipality, we have no leverage, pardon me?
Is Comcast now is a reseller of Verizon services? So if you go in there and decide to move your cell service over to Comcast and you have the internet and the cable and the TV, if you have, if you wrap those services around, it's like forty dollars unlimited data, it's amazing. I'm still with AT&amp;T like an idiot, but.
Well, I mean, it's just, you know, because the decisions that you make are based on national and international coverage as well. I mean, it's just, I feel like we're a little vulnerable because of, you know, it used to be that your landline coming in from AT&amp;T was reliable. You knew what you were getting and at least you could count on that. And now I just, I feel like the reliability of the utilities is, and it, you know, it's important because if somebody has to make a phone call, you know, from a life safety standpoint, I mean, it's not as though, there's so much, so much of what we do now is completely dependent upon the internet and cell service. It's not, it's not just a luxury, it's a necessity.
I think that's right, it's a safety issue. But the reason I asked Brian is to start with on the phone service stuff is because we provide all the other utilities for residents, right? Sewer, water, electrical, whatever. And we don't deal with the cell service and it is a problem in the village. And so I don't know if the village has a responsibility or there's no line item in anybody's budget to, you know, talk about it. But more so in yours because they're renting your poles from you.
I don't have, first of all, on the poles, if I could do it differently, the two hundred dollars they're giving us is a steal. That's mandated at the state level and it's like, it's a bitter pill for the small cells. They should, in my mind, pay more than that to provide, to use that. I mean, really it would come down to, we can, again, reach out and see if we can get any traction. I think there's, from a village level, I don't think you're gonna, beyond encouraging the existing players, I don't, it's your policy direction, but to establish your own, say, communications entity is probably not gonna be a neutral setting enterprise. It's gonna be a heavily subsidized enterprise.
I guess it's more of a question of how, how do we develop leverage with these organizations that are providing us with essential services?
Well, the reality of it is, is AT&amp;T is resident on our poles. It's blocking our ability to underground significant areas of the village. And I've been looking at this now for a long, long time because I hate the overhead lines, you know it, Brian. And the ugly ass wood poles that are all over town. It looks like a hillbilly town here sometimes when it comes to this sort of thing. But, and what's preventing us from taking these lines and putting them underground is AT&amp;T. And at some point, we're just gonna have to tell Peter Friedman to go poke the bear and see what comes up there. Because that's about the only way we're gonna get him to respond in a way that we can understand is to.
Are we unusual in this or are there other municipalities that are experiencing this?
Well, because we own our own poles.
Well, AT&amp;T own half, or they're co-owners.
So if, again, in ComEd service territory, ComEd doesn't have a problem putting stuff up overhead. So if you want something undergrounded, you're paying. In St. Charles, another municipal utility, they own the pole, they owned it from the beginning, so they have a little more policy direction on what's gonna happen with their utility. Now, they're currently not undergrounding, but they own the pole. And AT&amp;T or Comcast is a renter on the pole but ultimately owned by St. Charles.
That's the difference.
Here, it's joint ownership in ninety.
And it goes back to the original establishment.
Yeah, so I mean, the vast majority of poles are jointly owned from day one with, what was Illinois Bell or?
That would have been when telephone service was established?
Yeah.
Eighteen seventy-six.
Yeah, basically, yeah, so.
Early nineteen hundreds.
Okay.
Okay, moving forward.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate that, it's been something that's been bothering me, so.
Degression is always a good thing.
Street, I'm gonna jump ahead, so again, we, street lighting, so again, targeting, there's a handful of locations where we have, basically, a street light is on a wood utility pole because we've either threw over attrition and been able to move some of the overhead electric off to underground areas. So we're placing roughly probably fourteen locations where we'll put in a fiberglass streetlight pole in lieu of an existing wood utility pole that has a streetlight on it. A modest amount of pole painting, so this is the aluminum steel poles are on Green Bay Road and Sheridan Road. Replacement of some poles. And then again, a modest amount of relamping existing high pressure sodium lights with LED. So there's like incrementally each year trying to bite off as the budget allows some improvements in our energy efficiency. At, in a, from a building perspective, we've done, we had an emergent repair this last year in twenty nineteen on the electric plant, the heating boiler. We've identified some additional work that should be done, so we budgeted for that. It's currently serviceable, but we would like to make some repairs. We've got some more roof work on the block, coping block at the top, some service panel for four eighty volt switchgear in the building. And then from a static point, the gate at the top of the hill is looking pretty rough and we're gonna try to clean it up a little bit. It's not getting replaced, but it's in need of some attention and so is the stone monument entrance. So capital directional boring, this is related to new business. So basically, when a customer comes in and we need to do, we budget four hundred thousand dollars for underground directional boring, this line item is directly tied to new business services. And so it's not only the number of services, but the length that we have to go to provide electric service. Underground conductors at four hundred thousand includes both the one mile cable that I talked to you about and also conductors for new business. Distribution transformers is predominantly driven at, by the new business activity, but also is, does include emergent failure. So this year, you may recall, I came to you to ask, I think it was twenty-eight thousand, thirty thousand dollars to replace the transformer that we took from our working stock. So there will be occasional need to replace transformers that get hit by a car, you have a failure, the deterioration of the tank. Conduit reinforcement, seventy-five thousand dollars and trustee weather, there's occasionally some opportunities where I can shoot a piece of cable in from point to point and get rid of some overhead if AT&amp;T is not on that pole. So we take opportunities where we can to eliminate poles. Or even at the next level down is eliminate overhead high voltage line exposure, so it improves our reliability portfolio. And then cable devices and switchgear supports both new business and system reinforcement. And then from accounting perspective, because they're working on capital projects, a portion of the employee salaries is, rolls up against the capital budget as opposed to expense budget. Capital plan at Northfield, so we'll be hopefully sooner than later, but taking the consultant team and staff longer to get their hands around all the technical nuances of fifteen KV switchgear for a substation, but it's six hundred and seventy thousand dollar project for next year. This is again, one piece in bringing the second transformer at Northfield to fruition. We're gonna have an interconnection system fee from ComEd in the amount of five hundred thousand, we're waiting for a detailed estimate and what that will include. So at this point, it's a placeholder for what ComEd, it's probably not a negotiable item, but we should at least be able to get a understanding of what we're paying for. Anything associated with revenue metering, we'll be able to go back to IMEA as part of our contract and get an offset for anything related to revenue metering. Transformer yard and building modifications, so we would like to try to get some type of firewall between the transformers before the second unit arrives and we'll move forward with the specification of the transformers. So this is, the transformer cycle is, I shifted one year out. So beyond the delay of the switchgear, but also working with the finance team and looking at the cash bottom line, we moved the transformer one year out. Now, the transformer is of over a million dollar purchase and will be basically from the time we pull the trigger till when it arrives, like probably more than a physical calendar year to get here. That's the electric, I'll take any questions, I know I went through it kind of fast and we had some diversions. Is there any other questions on the electric utility portion of the budget?
Brian, was there really any significant change in the capital plan from last year to this year?
Well, the two, I would say the significant items that come to mind is we pulled one Winneka out, so there was cable, transformers and revenues and expenses in like manhole hardware and manholes that came out. We deferred, well, I shouldn't say deferred, we ended, basically it was almost from the time we hired the consultant, they said, there's no way you'll get the switchgear physically landed in twenty nineteen because of the manufacturing lead time. So you've got the six hundred and seventy thousand dollar project that moving over. And the rest of it then probably is tied to changes in the flow of new business. So, you know, we won't spend four hundred thousand dollars if we don't have four hundred thousand dollars of new business coming in the door.
So Brian, is it six seventy already let?
The six seventy is not let, so we've let about, without going back, I think the council's approved sixty for the strand to help us do the switchgear spec. We will bid it and we'll be coming back to you. And I think the six seventy will be what we will see for next year, or it'll arrive in twenty twenty, President Rents.
So the sixty was in this year, yeah.
Yeah. So six seventy was not let, has not been awarded.
Okay, so the conversation we had a few weeks ago about making sure we have a good bidding environment.
Right.
I mean, this is a big.
So this is a big ticket, there should be, I would expect there's three large switchgear manufacturers. And the spec right now, to the best of my knowledge, does not preclude any one of those three from bidding this project.
So, I mean, but clearly since we've waived bidding.
This, we should get three, I would expect we should have at least.
People want to do this.
People should want to do this, yeah.
Okay.
And if, you know, there's a change, if there's a change in the bidding environment, is there any flexibility time wise, project, you know, from a project standpoint?
There's some flexibility because it's really, until you get the transformer and the switchgear all installed, it's not, it's, it's not, the benefit doesn't develop until you get both pieces in place. So the, getting the transformer and the switchgear, as long as we get them both in, you know, in the, we get them both done in the time that we're planning, then it's of benefit. So I guess more concise answer is, if switchgear dragged into future year.
Yeah.
And we kept the transformer on track, then the project still gets done when it's in the budget.
Relative to this past year in terms of our unexpected, you know, is that, how much did that throw us off? And, I mean, stuff like this is gonna happen in the future, I mean, how?
So unexpected was the amount, we budgeted for the turbine overhaul, but the blades in the rotor was unexpected. So that was what, two fifty over, I think two hundred and fifty thousand more than we budgeted. So that, I mean, did have an impact on the bottom line in trying to manage the cash flow for the fund.
Okay, and that's, that's sort of.
But that was really the only, in the electric utility, I'm looking at Geovine to make sure that I didn't miss anything. But I think from really significant unexpected, that would be the largest item that moved through the budget.
What's the capacity credit looking like, twenty nineteen with all that work?
So, capacity, I, I can get you an update, but it wasn't as detrimental as what, uh, we thought it would be, because one, it's only one unit, and we went into it with a planned outage, so there was some grace that comes with a planned outage in, in not getting it done in the allotted window. Um, I don't, I can get you the, an update on what the differential for that unit was for the year, I'll take that as a follow-up and get it back through.
Just an overall question for the plant, you know, you talked about maybe some staffing turnover, whatever in the next year. Are we looking at any staffing issues at the plant? I know it's a very technical place, and how are we feeling about our delegate to keep running it?
So staffing issue, so I got, from a relay side, we, we went through a long search and found, I think, a really talented individual that's gonna be there for, that's one of the transitional spots that we were worried about.
Right.
And we, we've been able to refine and train plant operators, but probably the crunch that we're gonna have this year is we have one that's probably gonna retire, and we lost one recently for a promotional opportunity to go to the city of Chicago.
And they're not even, uh?
Those, those are more where you're bringing someone in that has, you, you're not gonna find anybody that has experience in both sides, water and electric. So when we interview, we're looking for someone that can come to the table with some water experience, or someone that has some electric experience, and then you're gonna train the offset side. There's, you're not gonna find someone in, well, I'd love to find someone, but we haven't found someone in the past that walks in and says, I've, I've got a water operator license, or start of a water operator license, and by the way, I know how to run turbines and generators, it just. They say what water and electric doesn't mix, well, we're mixing them.
We actually hire water plant operators who have other technical aptitude. So, you know, they have to have the aptitude A to get the, the water license, so we like to hire people that already have some water license, if that's feasible, but also some people that have other technical aptitude that they bring to the table. And that gets to training them on the electric side.
Is there anything in, um, huffing in twenty twenty for either the Kettleworth or Plankow and the water funds?
So, uh, when we, and can I say, not with Kettleworth, who I can give you an update, if you're okay with waiting a second, I'll talk about that in the water funds.
I got something to say about.
That's okay.
Oh, no, I got more to say.
Okay, I'm electric, any more to say?
All right, we're good to go, let's move on to water.
All right, tab twelve.
All right, so tab twelve, fund five twenty. We're getting to the end. Or, I hope I'm getting to the end, I don't, I guess I don't know what awaits me, so page two sixty-two. So, uh, we're tasked with providing the, the, uh, village with potable water, both for health and safety. Uh, we also, as you know, serve Northfield as one of, a wholesale customer in the unincorporated area of Indian Hills, Woodley Woods in Long Meadow. Uh, and this is again, a business or an enterprise fund, so it resides solely on the cell of water to, to exist and support the budgetary requirements. And moving through is basically about five point nine million dollars. So accomplishments, um, so again, there's a handful of maintenance work, as you can imagine, and you've heard me talk about our aging water infrastructure, so we, uh, do valve replacement, leak detection, so leak detection's important, we've got an IDNR requirement that if we're above ten percent, they're chasing us to, to lower undercounted water loss. Hydrant maintenance, uh, water meter replacement, and, uh, do additional preventive maintenance work on the water plant side of the business. Uh, we just, uh, as you, earlier this year, you approved a contract, we, um, did intake maintenance work. Uh, we do basin cleaning, so that's where we take half the plant down and clean out basically the sludge that's associated with the treatment process. Did completely thirty-one new water services a year to date. Forty-one water main breaks, um, and we've replaced ten, ten hydrants.
And so, let's see, what percentage of the water main breaks occur when it's super cold?
So the first part of this year was very painful, and I'm not looking forward to the second part of this year. But they do happen in the summer as well, but I mean, the first part of this year with the hard winter was, there was
That was tough.
Some painful weeks where we had back-to-back or multiples in the same day. We replaced, uh, one section of the roof over the filter basins at the water plant. We replaced the raw water intake meter, someone's asked, like, why, why did we replace the raw water intake meter again? Trying to make sure we were accurately measuring what's coming out of the lake and what's going into the system. All attributed to what our undercounted water loss was, so I just wanna make sure we have metering accuracy. We had one low lift pump fail during the middle of the year, it was under the village manager's purchasing authority, it was overhauled. And then incremental, uh, replacement of some fixtures in the water plant, again, trying to just incrementally move uh, the fund in the buildings to, uh, more energy efficiency. The goals for next year are again, adherence to regulatory requirements, we're gonna obviously connect new service connections, maintenance programs stay. Uh, there's, again, similar to the electric, uh, fund, there was no changes in, uh, the portfolios of maintenance work that we're planning to do next year. Uh, we are implementing not only in the rates, but also moving forward with water main replacement, and continuing to invest in the plant. And so key budget items, there's actually seven water main projects now, seven is higher than we normally expect, but as presented in public works budget, we carry those over, do the unfavorable bidding, and there's one project, the Will Road Crossing, that is gonna be changing in the scope of complexity that we've carried over as well. Different section of roof replacement at the plant. Uh, and again, as I mentioned, the budget, and we're budgeting for emergent repairs, so there's a healthy amount of repair sleeves and replacement valves and replacement fire hydrants. No changes I mentioned in staffing. While, uh, the budget for next year is based on a, we, we budget, uh, in thousands of cubic feet of water, and we're looking at a hundred and twenty-seven thousand. For next year is higher than the previous year, but again, as I mentioned in the past, you know, we're seeing in general decline in water consumption, that's the efficiency of modern appliances. So, that's good from an environmental perspective, but when you're spreading costs across, there's less units of sales to spread at a cost. So, on slide one thirty-five, again, similar to, um, the electric fund, we'll go through every number. Uh, we're looking at basically, uh, nine percent increase in revenue, there's an eight point five percent rate increase across the water rates. We have, down here, you'll see on debt service, you have two pieces in that, two hundred and sixty, seven thousand six hundred, we have our, um, debt service on our one million dollar loan, and then we have the first of four repayments to repay the general fund, the one million dollars, moving through the budget. Uh, similar to the electric fund, we took an approach to minimize any cost increases on services and supplies. And with the rate study, payment in lieu of taxes, the same concept is in the, embedded in the water fund organization at a lower amount, but as part of the water study, the council voted to, uh, fix that at a flat two hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred dollars annually. And then you'll see in the bottom there, you see a sizable jump in capital. And that's two pieces moving through, um, the deferral of the projects, and then we're also ramping up capital as part of the water fund study. And then, uh, just because we talked about it before, there is also in this fund, an administrative services piece of five hundred and sixty-two thousand in addition to the payment in lieu of taxes, moving back to the general fund. Same approach, um, looking at capital, so last year's budget was one point one million. Again, primarily attributed to the deferral of the water main projects, so you had the pieces, the projects that were in IEPA loan and Will Road were all deferred to twenty twenty. So, between the deferral and the in, planned increase in capital, we have a capital budget of one point nine million this year. From a fund balance perspective, the, uh, fund had an audited balance of two point eight million at the end of twenty eighteen. We're estimating closing at three point eight million at the end of nineteen. With the projects and budget before you, we estimate closing in twenty twenty at three million. The fund balance policy is one point three million for the four months of operating capital. And remember, I've got this on another slide, but what we're trying to get to is two point five million dollars of capital year over year, so we can be replacing a one percent of the system, so we're not there yet. And, and remember, parts of our system are already over a hundred years old, so we're like, we're gonna go into a one percent renewal cycle with something that's already a hundred years old. The rate change, we're implementing the recommendations that Burns and McDonald, the village council adopted, and we call it the sixteen seventeen study, because it started in sixteen and went into seventeen. So we implemented, uh, a base rate in the past for, so your monthly service charge. And there's also, similar to what we had in the past, a volumetric, so for a typical Winneka customer, you're gonna go, your monthly service uh, charge will go for, on a one inch meter, from six dollars and ten cents a month to nine fifteen. The volumetric rate changes from thirty-eight dollars per thousand cubic feet to thirty-nine seventy-five, and based on the fifteen hundred cubic feet that was in the study, those, a Winneka resident will pay an additional sixty-eight dollars and sixteen cents this year. And then, uh, unincorporated, and then special is the electric plant. So the electric plant sees an increase from twenty-fourty-nine for water use to twenty-nine eighty, and then the unincorporated area goes from sixty-eight oh two to seventy-one fifteen.
Is that, is that Northfield, the seventy-one?
No, North, this is, Northfield's under, uh, long-term contract, and there's a change by CPI, which will be determined in January. And it's, it's lower than that, because it's the wholesale unit price, this is the retail to unincorporated area, like Long Meadow.
Okay.
All right, hey Brian, or Kim, or somebody?
Why is that number, the sixty-eight per year, why is that different than our little analysis?
Sixty-eight oh two, oh, so, that's, that's one of the challenges, so the finance department's kept their units, uh, from budget to budget the same. As far as the, what they're basing it on, so they don't skew their comparison. The numbers I'm using here are what was in the rate study. And we've had discussions about changing that, but then what happens is, all this comparison that you're used to seeing, there's this sudden jump in one set of numbers or the other, I'm using the numbers that the council saw in the rate study for the typical consumption that Burns and McDonald looked at in the sixteen seventeen study.
What's the finance department using?
Uh, a legacy number, I don't.
Legacy number, which means out of date.
As you said, it's for consistency purposes, I don't have a.
And we've had that debate on which, then both numbers are out there in the public, and so since this, from my view, the sixteen seventeen study was the most recent number. I understand the, the position of making sure that, you know, when you're comparing year over year from the total taxpayer impact, that you wanna keep the comparison the same.
Well, I think the electric, you also had forty-six bucks, I believe, or something like that.
Right, and that's based on fifteen thousand one hundred, which is again, from the rate study.
So that's also lower than our finance analysis.
I did, I'll have to double check.
He's gotta go back.
If that's based on, I don't, I didn't put noted in there.
I think the key is apples to apples.
Yeah.
You know, I, that's what we're trying to.
Whatever it is.
Okay.
You have two parallel.
We could, we'll, we'll sync them for next year and agree on a.
Sure.
This slide, uh, is from, actually was what was in the rate study in sixteen seventeen. Um, and then what we've done is updated that to reflect kinda how some of our neighbors have moved, so the black bars, Winneka twenty twenty, the proposed rate, you'll see uh, people that are lower than us are Northbrook, Buffalo Grove, Palatine, Wilmette, Highland Park. People to the right of us are higher rates, Wheeling, Glenco, Deerfield, Glenview, Northfield, Kettleworth. That's, gives you.
Wow, Glenco really jumped, didn't they?
So, yeah, from the time the study was done with.
Yeah, they jumped big time.
Where, you see that first, how do you see that?
So the first slide.
When we look at the first, this first slide here, with the, and you see them there over to the left of us with nice cheap water.
Oh, 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 there you go, right, right.
And then all of a sudden, they jump over to the right of us, and now they're.
They're paying a lot more for water now, huh?
Isn't it interesting?
Is that because they're buying it from us? Why are they paying so much more?
Wait till they buy it from us.
So here's our consulting services slide, I knew I had one in here, so. So I have two regulatory submittals, I have some regulatory submittals they're doing twenty twenty-one. The first one being in the first quarter, and rather than delaying something that we need to turn in, uh, we've elected, that we'd like to get it done in twenty twenty. It's related to what's called a risk and resilience assessment, and our emergency response plans, two separate submittals that we need to file. We'll, uh, have earmarked, we'll go, uh, for professional services to assist with this, it'd likely be the same firm performing both. The automated metering I mentioned when we were talking about the electric fund. And then the, uh, Glenco study, which, uh, the timing of that would be, uh, right now is bringing back the first set of, uh, the, the study actually in the May timeframe of twenty twenty. President Rents, you mentioned.
Are we, are they committed to spending penny for penny equivalent with us?
Yeah, so the study right now, the way it would work is they'll get, Strand would invoice them, and we pay exactly fifty percent of the cost of Strand. But we're gonna, we remit that to Glenco, we're not paying Strand, so they, they contracted with Strand. We haven't paid, actually, we haven't, I haven't seen an invoice yet, but what's, was agreed to is a fifty percent split.
Up to thirty thousand? Or is this another thirty thousand on top?
This is, I move, I'm carrying thirty because we, we said, uh, this project would go until next year, so we haven't paid anything this year, so I'm carrying thirty over. Figuring that we'll spend some money this year, and then I couldn't see it going more than thirty next year, is my, what my assessment was.
So that'd be sixty, total?
I think their total project was like sixty-seven or sixty? And so, again, we've, it's already in flight. And so they'll have been working on it for a handful of months, and so we'll have accrue of cost in twenty nineteen, and we'll still have some carryover cost in twenty twenty for, to bring it, the study to the table.
Okay, I just, gonna make a statement, it has nothing to do with, I mean, we agreed to share this cost with them. But, the more I look at this, and the more I understand the condition that Glenco, or the, or the, or the conditions that Glenco is dealing with in their water, their water, uh, system. They're the ones that stand to benefit from any sort of interconnection. Because I think at the end of the day, what I've heard from elected officials, as well as people who are politically involved over there, that they would love to shut down their, uh, water plant and share ours. Which, to me, feels like we're paying thirty grand so that they can figure out whether or not this is gonna be a better deal for them than it is anything else. I mean, we don't need Glenco, we're happy, just given, we don't need to sell them water, we're happy just selling to Northfield and selling to the golf courses.
All right.
I don't see how we, I don't see how we. I don't see how we stand to benefit from, from this at all, from a financial or otherwise.
I don't agree with that, I mean.
Because I don't believe that the rates will ever go down, and I don't believe that we'll get any sort of economy of scale by just simply selling more water to Glenco. So the issue I'm coming up with is that we're spending thirty thousand dollars so that they can figure out whether buying our water is a benefit to them or not.
That, that, it may be, but isn't it a long-term, I mean, Brian's showing us a, a slide that says that our demand is falling off, and so we're in the business of selling water.
I agree.
Right, so if we have more customers to buy our water, and we can basically maintain our capital expenditures at the same rate, then we're, you know, lessening the per-unit cost for ourselves by selling more water for them, right? Because we're amortizing the cost of the capital over a greater number of units of water that we're selling.
I don't like the idea that we're paying thirty thousand dollars for them to figure out what's best for them.
I don't disagree, but we can charge.
We know what's good for us.
But we can charge it to them back on the other end, right? I mean.
If they decide that we're a better deal.
Well, we'll definitely be a better deal.
That's, you know, so, any, any future conversations on this, Rob? I think we need to, to get them out on the table and really have a robust conversation on who's benefiting from this whole process. And what the potential benefit is to us, because if we're paying simply for Glenco to figure out whether our water is better than their water, doesn't make any sense to me.
Wouldn't, wouldn't we price it in a way that there would be economies of scale?
Right.
Why, wouldn't we?
Or that we would profit from it, certainly.
Right, right.
I mean, isn't that the whole?
But, no, but the whole interconnect study is whether it makes sense or not, once we get beyond that.
The other, the other piece of this that would come out is some other things they have, so one is potentially showing that we'd have, there's capacity to do it, or what changes are gonna be of, required to take them on. If that's what they so desire, collective you wanna do. And two is, there's also potentially, they're looking at, they have contemplated out, changes to their elevated storage. And while I know that's not a topic that Winneka likes, there is, from a system reliability perspective, having access to elevated storage provides some level of contingency to the village.
Elevated storage.
Water tower.
We don't tower road.
Yeah, I know, I, that's, I just wanted to be sure that that was exactly what it meant.
So, there's, I, the approach to this was, you know, collaborative, I think, in nature, it was also similar to the approach we took, well, actually, this is actually a little bit better than, I think, the same approach we took when we were looking at Kettleworth.
Yeah.
Coming to the system where we said.
And it did make financial sense for Kettleworth at that time, it did not.
No.
No, they found a better alternative with Wilmette, but Kettleworth would be, if there was something that came that resulted from our discussions with Glenco, Kettleworth has an out in their contract to potentially jump in as well.
But Wilmette's water rates are so much lower, it seems like it'd be hard to beat.
Well, you gotta keep in mind, when you look at these water rates, uh, Wilmette sells to Glenview. And they also sell to an independent utility, so.
And Kettleworth now.
And Kettleworth now, so they're, uh, part of their, uh, buildup, I was working in Wilmette at that time, when we were looking at the analysis to ramp up the plant to be able to assert the Glen, Glen development.
Right.
And so, yeah, their water utility, right, so they, they do make some money off of it. So they, they do make some money off of it. Highland Park is the same way, they, they serve Deerfield. So I, while I understand where President Rentsch is coming from, I think there is, I mean, we would never make a deal that isn't good for Winaka, first and foremost.
I'm not questioning that, ever. It's just, I don't like the idea of sharing the expense for them to make a decision on whether we're a better deal than what they currently have. I think they should have footed the bill for the whole thing, because they're the ones that could stand to benefit from it more than, way, way more than we would. Except, what we do is we get to offload excess capacity, maybe.
And there's no stopping them from turning to Highland Park and buying from that.
Right, exactly. It's like, oh, Winaka too expensive, we'll just go buy from Highland Park. So that's why I, I wasn't happy, why, especially given what I've learned about Glenco in the past year, sitting in my seat. I, I want to be good neighbors with them. Rob has a really good relationship with their village manager. I mean, you know, we're all in the same neck of the woods up here, but sometimes you feel like you're being played. And I don't think that, that, uh, that in this particular situation, that we're coming out on top of this, with this agreement. Unless, at the end of the day, we find a profit center that makes it well worth our while. I just don't know whether thirty grand is worth the look, so.
Well, we agree.
That's it, so, I'm done. Finish up, Brian.
Okay. Under highlight, no.
You want to know how I really feel?
Wow, there's more?
Can you check with contractors about what we have?
Forget all of that.
They just would have kept their potty.
We'll just annex the whole damn thing.
Okay, under the maintenance portfolio again, is, so this, some of the areas worse, that where expenditures are under the maintenance of the water system. So spoil removal, aggregate deliveries associated with obviously water main repair. We do sixty thousand dollars a year in, in water meter replacement, ancillary supplies associated with water meter replacement. Contractor resources is contingency, related to if we have to directionally bore in a service, or we need additional resources for water main breaks. Leak detection services is targeted at identifying places where we have unaccounted water loss that we're not aware of. Budgeting for ten hydrants and some insertion valves. So it's not too exciting, but required, required for maintaining.
What are insertion valves?
Insertion valves is where if we need to put a valve in, we can do that without actually shutting off the water. So we did one, one that comes to mind last year, is after filing a unplanned.
Like a bypass?
Well, no, actually, what it is, they can dig down to the water main, and actually, while the water main's still charged, without impacting water quality to the customers, actually cut the pipe and put a valve into that, so we can shut the water off.
Got it.
We've, we've used those in some instances to avoid, where we've had, to say, difficult situations, or a valve that we couldn't shut off, we've had to put a valve in.
Got it, that's great. What, I'm sorry, what is aggregate delivery and spoil disposal?
So on, we, for every water main, we've put sand around the water main after it's excavated, then we backfill it with stone.
Yep.
And then we've got to put cold patch on it, and then we look to our friends in Public Works to help put the road back together. But then we also have to pay to have the spoils tested and hauled away and disposed of.
Okay. Thank you.
Just as a side point, spoil disposal is done through a multi-community bid with, through the Glenco initiative, Glenview, excuse me, initiative. Some other notable items, so we're budgeting about a hundred and four, well, a hundred and forty thousand dollars for chemical treatment. Our software slash SCADA agreement, so supervisor control data acquisition is up. There is some economy to renew, we had a three-year clip instead of doing it as a single-year license, so we're proposing a three-year renewal. The wet well is, that's the raw water, that small building in front of the water plant. We've done this in the past, we'll basically have someone come in and vacuum out any sediment that's in the bottom of that. And we will do a dive inspection of the raw water line. Jumping ahead, a hundred and seventeen thousand of expense work in the buildings, again, offset, I'll start at the bottom, cleaning up the gate appearance, some masonry repairs, still have, would like to see some small sewer into the water plant. There's now also the opportunity to reach into the Illinois rebate program. Now that legislative action is, is over, so we'd like to try to get something, some small sewer into the system. On the capital side, and before we get to the water mains, we've got a large roof project. This is over the mixing bases, and it's a chlorine room. We have a dump truck shared with the electric fund, so it's ninety-three thousand dollars. We're planning on selling that at, at an auction, and we have allocated employee salaries. What's?
How big is that rough?
That's the entire area over the settling basins and the chlorine room. I don't, do you know how many square feet it was off the top?
A lot.
We can get you the square footage, but so, basically is taking off the existing roof, potentially some deck replacement, and putting a whole new membrane roofing down. And then also the coping, coping blocks and liner, we can.
It seems like, it just, I can't imagine, that's a lot of money for.
I can give you, we can give you the footage, and I think we looked, we used last year's bids to get to this number.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
On a square foot basis?
Pardon? No, that's, this is a flat, there's some, a flat roof over the filter basins, or not the filter, but settling basins and the chlorine is a flat roof. It's not the clay tile that you see when you come down the hill. So that's putting insulation, you know, potential decking, insulation, and a new membrane liner. And then also some masonry repairs on the side of the parapet wall, where that.
Well, the bids will be within.
The bid, well, yeah, I mean, we're going to go out for bids on it, but this is, that's what we budgeted.
Wow.
Always a revenue possibility.
So water main projects, going through these quickly, and I have some slides of, so basically on Elm Street, we've got parallel mains, and as part of the public works process, road rehabilitation, we want to get out of the small, get off the small main, transfer the remaining services on before Steve redoes the road. We've got the six water main projects there listed, which obviously, some of those are carryover from last year. And then the, the ones that we're currently in this year is what we had planned for this year. And then the one that won't go away is the crossing of Will Road. So we've, basically, the Union Pacific Railroad has taken the position that structurally lining that, due to not only the closeness where the pipes all Y into each other, to the tracks, but also because there's not, was not a host pipe installed in nineteen forty-one, they don't appear that we're going to be able to line it. So I'm proposing for next year to reconfigure the west side. And we'll spend some time, engineering-wise, decide if we're going to abandon the crossing or budget, and move forward in the future year with a new crossing.
Brian, are all those roads defined there, are they part of Steve's?
Yeah, Warwick, Westmore Gage, Murrell, and Mount Pleasant are all on Steve's slides.
And then, do you have a contingency in there for the unanticipated?
So, there's no line item for contingency. What we did is, some of these, we increased the project dollar amount from last year. So if you went and compared one for one to last year, some of these dollar amounts have went up. It, I guess that's what I call contingency or escalation, but there's not a, Steve, you know, goes down Warwick and finds an underground tank and wants me to pay for a part of it, there's not a contingency like that layered in.
When we have the next vortex, and you have to blow out, is that a capital item?
No, so the next vortex, the, so the contingency is, those are on the fittings. So I carry, basically, I carry a pretty healthy budget for repair fittings. And then the contractor of resources is, I think, was forty-six thousand dollars. So if I have to call a contractor to come in, that's where that would show up.
So that, so that was, there were extra, extra personnel was called in to, that was what the, the forty-six thousand was?
The forty-six would be, is if we have to go beyond village staff and bring a third-party contractor in to help with one or more water main breaks.
So, actually, I, it's, it's sort of an accounting question relative to, it's a, it's sort of the same question I was asking about the overage relative to the unexpected repairs at the electric plant. Is that considered part of your contingency fund, or is that where we just go into our, you know, dip into our fund balance?
On the enterprise fund side of the fund balance. Is the contingency that we identified to.
Yeah, that's just for the general fund?
That's for the general.
Thank you.
And, and, you know, again, at this point in time, both these funds are over their fund balance. So I think that's why we carry, my understanding, the intent of carrying four months operating is that there may be unexpected things that an operating department encounters.
Well, I kind of think about it two different ways. One is from our side, right? And the other one is if there's some glitch relative to revenue collection, but anyway, that's right.
Can I just bring up a point that Chris brought up earlier, when you were talking about stormwater, like Will Road and all that, cost per household. When you look at it on a small basis, yeah, it's a lot for the house. No different than the water main job.
Right, Warwick is a great example.
Right, right.
Village-wide, we have to share.
Right.
Whether it's water, sewer, stormwater, just keep that in mind as you go into the stormwater side.
Yeah, it's a system.
It's a system.
Yeah, we're not charging them extra just because it's in front of their house.
Right, or it's a little street with a eight-inch, a new eight-inch main that's costing an arm and a leg, right. I mean, that's, that's an expensive little water main there in Warwick.
But just a question, Brian, on that, if you go to larger mains, there's more water pressure in the houses, do people use more water?
It's not so much a function of pressure, why we're going to larger mains, you're going to larger mains for a volume, and mostly for fire flows, to be honest about. So four- and six-inch mains don't provide the level of hydrant support that the fire department's looking at. See, look at it, nod, first thing he's going to do with me all day. So we're moving to larger, so you're moving to larger mains. Generally, what, in Winaka, we're going, we're replacing, so far in my experience, you're looking at four- and six-inch mains don't provide what's required, and you're moving to at least eight. And sometimes larger, if there's a longer range plan to connect, say, create a, a larger volume flow. It's not being done for pressure, it's being done for hydrant flows. And there's, Chief Berkowski's got a little diagram, and he tests every year all our hydrants, and like, we know which hydrants are not meeting his expectations for flow. And so as part of the water main, as we take on a water main project, we're looking to make sure that gets addressed.
So, so we, none of that comes out until we ask you the question. So in terms of just, you know, village communication to residents, I think that, you know, public safety is super important, and people will appreciate knowing this. But we're looking at this and maintaining it this way. So how, Megan, whoever's in charge of the newsletter, you know, talk, I don't mean spin in a bad way, but talks about this in our, in our publications is super important, especially as we're facing the stormwater stuff.
Good point.
So Brian, are we on our long, multi-decade plan? Is this thing on track, or are we?
We're technically off-track, because we deferred last year's projects. But assuming you let me roll last year's projects into this year, I'm on track.
You're on track, and you think that, and that the rates are, it's all in balance?
It's all in balance. Actually, my financial advisor is actually trying, he's double-checked to make sure, and told me I'm on track if I do these.
Is that right?
So, but if, like, you decided that you didn't want to roll nineteen into twenty, and you slim, you want to slim the twenty capital portfolio down, then you would come off-track. We're probably, from a total cash in the fund, a little bit better than what Burns and McDonald projected. But from a project perspective, pipe in the ground, completing this, these, this portfolio of the twenty projects, excluding Will Road, will put us, per the Burns and McDonald's study.
Yeah, we've been tracking that. The, the study laid out very clearly how much additional renewal replacement on the ten-year ramp up to that two point five million dollars. And we're right in line, we're at ninety. I think ninety-seven percent of what was supposed to be completed to date will be completed by the end of two thousand twenty. So we're tracking well, and in terms of the rates, the eight and a half percent is, Brian's slideshow, we're a little under on the residential side, but on the wholesale side, a little bit over. So look, the total revenue and expenses, we're, we're right there.
And I, I actually agree with Ann on this, you know, you're increasing the rates eight percent, we know that. It's in, it's, you know, in, in the plan, but nonetheless, there's a budget review, it's not a bad thing to mention why, in part, why we're doing this.
Well, I think, you know, beyond, so let's be clear, beyond, so the upsizing of mains related to fire service, the replacement of the mains is aging infrastructure.
Right, right, right.
I mean, we're, again, we've got parts of our water systems over a hundred years old. I think the average was in the seventies. You know, our main breaks miles, breaks per mile are higher than the industry average. I mean, it's kind of all the little tidbits that came out in that water main rate study. We haven't been, say, good at replacing the aging infrastructure. We're trying to get, I won't even say back on track. We're trying to get a plan to deal with it moving forward.
And by going from a four-inch to an eight-inch.
You've still got to dig it up, you've still got to transfer all the services.
Are they led?
Any other questions for, any other questions for Brian?
It's not genetic.
Great job, thank you. Thank you.
Yay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, before, one last item of business with us, is last year, we began, I think, what hopefully will be a tradition of crafting a transmittal letter to the community for the budget. And certainly, I think it's important, because it, it'll hit a lot of the things, Ann, that you just hit on. Something informative that explains we're engaging in these projects, and the reasons for them, so that it can be digested without somebody having to go through five hundred and thirty-two pages of the budget. So I don't know how that came, came about last year.
Megan, you wrote that, didn't you, last year?
Megan wrote it, yeah.
Megan?
I'll do that again. We were talking about it before we went into today, thinking that you probably want to do it again.
So, so you, in Winaka on Friday, Josie included sort of a high level. We invite you to participate in the workshop, and here are the things that, you know, are proposed. We wanted to hear the conversation today, because the message last year was more a thematic reflection of what you discussed. So we were anticipating that would be between now and the introduction, which is going to be November nineteenth.
Well, wasn't that a letter that was actually, here, community, here's the budget that we're, we're approving?
Before, right, that we're, we're introducing to approve.
Right.
Because last year, we were a little, we were tighter in time. I thought it would be better to have a.
Whatever, I just want to make sure that, I think it's, I think it's a good tradition, and I think it's.
Yes, I agree.
Can we have that dollar image?
You like the dollar?
We always like the dollar.
Compare it from nineteen ninety-seven to now, just so people kind of get the point.
And the, and the chart, ninety-seven?
Yeah, yeah, show the, show what the dollar looks like now. And show what the dollar looked like in nineteen ninety-seven.
We have to work on that.
This is all great P R stuff, you guys.
Well, I think people want to know.
We're becoming more efficient.
Because, and that's the issue we've been talking about, is just how do you coordinate the spending? And if we don't do it, no one else will.
No more of the black ink, please.
Right.
I know you government nerds love that, but no.
And the county deserves a shout-out.
I can't remember the last time we used it. I've seen it, it keeps popping up.
It's around.
Okay, well, good job today, guys.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Tim, great job.
Thank you, guys.
It's a lot of stuff.
Thank you for the presentation, I mean, you know, this is.
Just to make it official, this is, item number three is public comment. Would anybody from the public like to speak on any of the items we spoke about today? First row. Okay, chairman, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned. Awesome work.
What do you want to do with all these holders? Do you want these back?